This time I'd like to call to order the Monday, June 2, 2014, meeting of the Currituck County Board of Commissioners to order. At 6:00 PM, we had a work session with staff about compatibility standards for subdivisions. At this time, I'd like to call on Reverend Kim Farabee from New Bethel Church of Christ to lead us in our invocation, as well as the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
Let us bow our heads. Gracious Father, we do thank you for this opportunity, and God be asked that you have your hands of blessings upon this meeting, oh God, that you are God, and lead us with pure wisdom, in Jesus' name that we do pray. Amen.
Let us allegiance to the Vibe of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Farabee. Next item on the agenda is the approval. I have two items to add to it. Item four, under Consent Agenda, is project ordinance for central elementary school parking. Item five is resolution opposing the feasibility of dissolving or the plan of dissolution of Elizabeth City State University. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second? Any further discussion? Hearing on all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Like? Sign?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Staff is also recommending that we do not move forward.
Okay. That correction in my motion.
Well, do we need to amend the agenda, or just when it comes time for that, not go into closed session?
That'll be fine. Obviously, if you don't make the motion go in closed session, you don't go into closed session.
That's what I was thinking. Okay. First item on our agenda tonight is public comment. We have several people signed up to speak, and Mr. McCree will be using the time device that we have, and everyone will be given three minutes. So, when I call your name and you come forward, I ask that you please state your name and your address for the record. Thank you. First, we have Ms. Mary Etheridge.
My name is Mary Etheridge, and I live at 846 Shawboro Road in Shawboro. My family and I have been involved in litigation with the county after four of the sitting commissioners, Mr. O'Neill, Mr. Idlet, Mr. Petrie, and Ms. Gilbert, approved a junkyard to be located on 1.1 acres of land in the Shawboro neighborhood. At the last county commissioner meeting, Mr. O'Neill, for several minutes, quizzed the planning director and the county attorney over our lawsuit, which I must say, we won. But since I don't have but three minutes to respond to most of his issues, it may take me several meetings. First, I would like to apologize. Yes, I was wrong, and I will admit, not every entity in the county recommended denying Mr. Cartwright's conditional zoning. When Mr. Cartwright appeared before the Technical Review Committee and was accompanied by former county commissioner Owen Etheridge. Now, this in itself is very strange for a county commissioner to attend a TRC meeting with an applicant, and I think it may be the first time it ever happened in Currituck County. Out of the 30 entities on the TRC, two recommended approval. When Mr. Cartwright went before the TRC for his special use permit, five out of 30 recommended approval. These include the county engineer, soil and water, utilities, emergency management, and building inspection. But the planning staff, the planning board, and all the others mentioned at our Superior Court hearing said it was a bad idea, and guess what? So did the courts. Also, at the last meeting, Mr. O'Neill went to great lengths with the county attorney, and revealing that my attorney admitted at the Court of Appeals that there is no junkyard in the UDA. Mr. O'Neill, did you not know that the Board of Adjustments meeting on June 14, 2014, my attorney argued BOA 1210, Daniel Clay Cartwright's appeal of administrator's decision that PB 12-06, a special use permit application, is classified as a junkyard salvage yard, and is subject to the requirements of Section 3.8.1 of the UDA. The Board of Adjustment passed unanimously to uphold the administrator's decision that it be classified as a junkyard salvage yard. I can't go into great lengths, but I think it's more relevant that on March 11, 2013, Currituck County Superior Court Judge Godwin laughed and asked your county attorney, "If you're now arguing that it is not spot zoning, why did you announce at the Board of Commissioners meeting it was spot zoning?" But you know, it doesn't matter what it's called, or how you spin it. All I know is I would rather sit on my deck and see this. And that's exactly what you see from my deck. I'd much rather see that than to sit on my deck and see a recycling center. And yes, this is exactly what a recycling center looks like, because this is high-tech recycling on Currituck Highway. And I'd be willing to bet that Mr. O'Neill, Mr. Petrie, Mr. Idlet, and Ms. Gilbert would prefer to see grain bins, no matter how bad they look, because it is agriculture, than to see a junkyard. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Etheridge. Mr. Woody, that in fact is a junkyard, correct? I-Tech out in Moyoc? That is in fact a junkyard?
It's classified as a junkyard. It's a recycling center, though.
Recycling cars?
Yes.
Junkyard. How about putting some of the pictures up? That is a recycling center, as was similar to what was being proposed. That's the one in Shawboro, right down the street from the one that the private individual was proposing. And everybody in this county goes to recycling centers. The fact of the matter is, is when Mr. Cartwright came forward with his permit, there was not a designation for recycling center, correct?
Correct.
And that designation that closely fitted was what?
Junkyard salvage yard.
So, our very own county recycling centers, had they had to come forward at the same time, they would have been classified as a junkyard, because the county had no definition for recycling center, correct?
We classify those as convenience centers, under the ordinance.
Which is, what do we do with the stuff that goes in there?
Probably take it to the landfill, or take it to a recycling center.
And recycle it. Okay, go to the next picture. Oh, now, this is, you know, when this permit came forward, there was a lot of concern about pollution and groundwater. And since this permit came forward, I've had some folks in Shawboro come to me, and this is the site right there, right down from the Shawboro post office, where there used to be a filling station, correct?
I believe so.
And if I'm correct, Mr. McCree, what is the status of where that filling station is now?
Well, the state of North Carolina has something underway with regard to that site. As I've spoken with the underground storage tank unit at the Department of Environment and Natural Resources, they've provided us with information that they have an ongoing remediation program going on at that site due to the leakage of gasoline and other hydrocarbons into the groundwater in that area.
And there's houses surrounding that site, all in that vicinity, correct? Including Ms. Etheridge's?
That's my understanding.
And I'm sure that she would be very concerned about the carcinogens that are leaching into the groundwater supply in her very neighborhood, and all the people that live in that neighborhood. Could you not give us an update as to what the status is?
Well, as I spoke with Mr. Scott Riles at the state, he said that they have, again, an ongoing remediation program. They've identified with monitoring wells that hydrocarbons have been found leaching off the site, under Station Lane, onto adjacent property into wells there, and also across Shawboro Road into wells at residents across the road from this particular site. I asked him, "What do you do with regard to remediation?" He gave me several options. He said they have a grant program where some instances, they'll offer to provide a community with a water supply system, monies, in order to connect someone's property to the central water supply, to get them off their contaminated wells. They might offer property owners whole-house filters to filter the contaminants from their well water. I said, "Well, what are you doing in this particular location?" He said they had done some things to try to allow for, I guess, natural bacterial degradation of the hydrocarbons. So, he said they had done some things, such as bringing a pump, pumper truck, where I think he told me that they pumped groundwater for five to eight hours on at least one occasion, and trying to, I guess, get off the surface the gasoline or petroleum products that are in the groundwater to help facilitate the natural process of breaking down the hydrocarbons. He said that that's really all they've done to this point at that site. I guess of some concern, he said that they are supposed to test these monitoring wells once a quarter, but that they had not been able to do so in the last 18 months, not only in this location, but across the state, due to some problems with their testing contractor, and hope to start again sometime in late May. I do not know if they have continued testing here. I am going to be back in communication with him to again ask for copies of what's in the files, so the county has some understanding as to what the significance is of the situation in that community.
Do we know if the surrounding property owners, including Ms. Etheridge, have been informed of this?
I don't know. The monitoring reports provided to us by the state in 2009 and 2010, the engineering firm makes recommendations, and one of those recommendations was to communicate with the property owners, with the contaminated wells, the laboratory results, and request input from the state toxicologists. But, Matt, we don't know whether the property owners have been indeed notified.
Okay. Go to the next slide, Mr. Woody, please. That's, as Ms. Etheridge showed, that's the site you see when you're driving through Shawboro. Go to the next. That is the site when you ride up to it. And the reason this is relevant is this was rezoned to allow commercial uses. There is a truck weigh scales on that property where it has been used for commercial uses. There is an office building where it had been used for commercial uses. And the applicant had proposed to tear all that down, and clean it up, and put in a recycling center that would operate, I believe the hours were nine to five or six?
I believe that was correct. It was daylight hours.
And it was going to be, have to be enclosed? There was?
It would have been fenced.
That was what was proposed, but the real whammy is, the county never gave that gentleman a permit to do that, did we?
At that location, no.
We didn't?
We did not.
All we did was rezoning, correct?
That's correct.
So, under the county's ordinance, would he have even been allowed to put in that recycling center at that time?
No, staff's position was that the ordinance had a setback that the applicant could not meet from that location. So, no.
So, he would not have been approved, even though he had a rezoning?
That's correct.
So, it would have been some other use, which is traditional agriculture and that type of use anyways. Go to the next slide, please. This is an adjoining business here. One of the largest agricultural fertilizer companies in northeastern North Carolina is one of the adjoining property owners. You can see where theirs goes on back, and then you see the grain silos back there, correct?
Correct.
And if you look to the right, there's railroad tracks, correct?
Correct.
And I believe some landscaping people used to operate around the railroad tracks as well, correct?
I believe so, yes.
Go to the next slide, please. Once again, that's, that is, no, you can skip that one. Go to the next one. That is Station Lane. That right there is the site. Directly to the right of that is, I believe, three houses. Across the street is a house, and to the left is three or four houses, one of them being Ms. Etheridge's. And I'm concerned about that gasoline leaching into the water, and the safety of the folks in Shawboro, and I think that that probably needs to be a focus of what we're spending a little bit of time and attention on. So, but by the way, my last question. Who is the property owner?
The property owner, as we understand it, is Mr. Ray Etheridge.
I have no more questions. We'll move to the next person on the public comment session, which is Ms. Cameron Lowe.
Good evening, Cameron Lowe, 619 Idlet Road. And I'm here this evening just to re-inform you guys about an event that we have coming up, that I shared with you earlier in the year. As you know, I've told you before, that this year, we are celebrating 100 years of cooperative extension. And to fully celebrate that anniversary, we would like to invite you to our Centennial Celebration, which will be held on September 20, at the Currituck County Rural Center in Powell's Point. This is also in combination with the Currituck County Heritage Festival. So, it's going to be a very exciting day, just to give you a little heads up about what we have planned. We'll start the event around lunchtime, right about 12:30. We'll have food, music, exhibitors, vendors, contest. We'll be doing the Little Miss Currituck Pageant, which we've done once before. Been corn chucking contest. We'll be doing some hog calling, chicken chucking, some of the old traditional agricultural contests that we've had here in this county. So, we look forward to making that a very fun, very historical celebration of Currituck County heritage. The highlight, in my mind, of this event will be a literal walk through a timeline in the history of Currituck County. And we intend to marry that with how extension was affected by and affected the history of Currituck County. So, we're very, very excited about the prospect of having that walk through the timeline. The events of the day will end with a barn dance, a good old-fashioned barn dance, out there from about 4:00 to 6:00 PM, also on the Rural Center site. So, we're very, very excited about that, and we do hope that you'll join us for that particular event. And while I have your ear, just very quickly, I would like to let the public know, and you guys as well, that we are again offering our 4H summer day camps this summer, with a little bit of a twist. We will be able to offer two sites this summer, one at Shawboro Elementary, one at Griggs Elementary, for any elementary-age student in Currituck County. Very economical camp. They run Monday through Thursday, full day, $65 a week, so we look forward to offering that. The highlight of that camp is enrichment opportunities, hands-on learning. And our goal is not childcare for the camp, while certainly it may meet some of that need for some of our folks. But our goal is to really combat the summer slump that a lot of students go through over the summer, so to keep those educational gains going. We are very fortunate this year that students that are attending the summer reading camps with Currituck County Schools will be assimilated into our camp after they finish those activities with the schools as well. So, that's a very nice partnership we're very proud of. So, we look forward to that. Of course, we have lots of other great extension events that we have coming up, from Home Food Preservation Series. If you need your pesticide recertification credits, we can certainly help you with that. Youth Cooking Series, as I said, our 4H day camps, we're even sponsoring a 5K. And then also, you folks have some excellent, very outstanding young people that will be representing Currituck County on the state level at several contests. We have quite a few youth that will be representing Currituck at the State 4H War Show in Raleigh coming up in July. And we have several youth that will be representing Currituck County at State 4H Congress, which is a public speaking competition that is the best of the best, that get together once every year in Raleigh to have a contest, and that will be in June of this year. And just got to brag real quick, my daughter made it to state this year, so she'll be representing us with that. So, I thank you for your time and your attention tonight. Certainly, if you want to know more about our events that are coming up, you can take a look at our website, and you guys have a great evening.
Thank you, Cameron. You guys do a wonderful job. We appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Now, next is Ms. Ginger Sykes.
I'm Ginger Sykes. I'm at 111 Mallard Drive in Currituck. My experience in assisting with our Currituck Animal Shelter as a non-paid volunteer, many hours a day, and often as a platinum donor, goes back to 1991. I helped found both of the humane organizations in Currituck County. For decades, I have studied and visited many shelters around the country, which might prove helpful in setting up the operation of our new shelter. Our Animal Lovers Assistance League have received praise from the state inspector for how we operate the shelter. We attend grant-writing seminars. Thanks to the efforts of Frances Walker, we've received several grants, such as the $10,000 PetSmart Charities Grant. Organization has flourished during our nine years in existence. We have been fortunate to receive larger donations from those who visit and adopt our shelter, even though sometimes they don't live in Currituck, such as Don Sawyer from Elizabeth City, who donated his Corvette, which is still for sale, by the way, and a van to us when he was terminally ill. And Pauline Wright, for example, who set up an endowment for us. It has taken decades to build the public support that we have, which resulted last year in nearly $110,000 in donations and in-kind services by individuals, local businesses, and other organizations, such as the Currituck Master Gardeners. This is a considerable savings to the county. Plus, there are thousands of hours freely given by our many volunteers. We have state and county laws that we must follow. Just like the Sheriff's Department or Planning Department, you should expect us to follow the laws, which we do. If we did not, then there would be reason to criticize us, I think. If you want different local laws, then you have the authority to write them, and we will abide by them. Because of the efforts of many volunteers who assist approximately twice a month in conducting off-site adopt-a-thons, our adoption rate for both dogs and cats is higher than the national average, especially for dogs. It should improve even more when we get a new, larger shelter in the county. We work cooperatively with the Sheriff's Department, such as having some lawn mowing done by inmates. If we were to have inmates working and cleaning the dog kennels, the cost for having a deputy there would probably be approximately the same as two of our employees, and our employees are better trained at this, and help keep down the spread of disease. Here's a copy of a letter from Sheriff Johnson of an investigation that you had her do. You have a copy of this now, correct?
I do not.
And the sheriff found that some things that you had asked to investigate, there was no wrongdoing, no illegal or criminal activity. And this was one of four studies that found that allegations that were submitted by a disgruntled employee were without merit. Okay. Our contributions to the community, such as supplying free of charge, the kind used to the elementary school students in Currituck County, our Read to the Kitty program, and Fund with Animals, which we're going to do again this summer, our summer programs that benefit our children, and have been praised by the superintendent of schools. It's easy to stand outside and make promises. We walk the walk every day, and we have for nine years, and it's resulted in saving thousands of animals in Currituck County, which is what we're about. Thank you.
Thank you. I will point out that we have a whole bunch of people signed up tonight, and I'm going to ask everybody to abide by the three minutes. Please. Ms. Frances Walker.
I am Frances Walker, and I live in Sligo, if you know where that is. Post office is Moyoc, but nowhere near. I'd like to address the financial stability of the Animal Lovers Assistance League. I've been the treasurer and bookkeeper for over eight years. I spend approximately 30 hours per week on duties I have been assigned, including shopping for and hauling most of the pet food and cleaning supplies weekly using my own vehicle. I am paid as a contractor for ALL, which is legal under the providing services. Our audits have been done each year and are in good order. I hope you will look at those. ALL has been able to operate the animal shelter with its earnings, within its earnings, and donations, and also have been able to fund a balance in case of emergencies. We provide over $9,000 worth of insurance, that being workman's comp, errors and omissions, liability, vehicle insurance, volunteer liability coverage, and we have now a policy on our equipment that we own. Recently, we've provided our manager health insurance instead of a raise. We have assumed the repairs on most of the equipment owned by the county, and have been able to meet the regulations for state inspections. The shelter heat and air conditioning is on its last leg, and we must use fans and portable appliances, which is a higher operational cost. We hire eight or nine employees, 25 to 40 hours weekly, to be able to open seven days a week at limited hours. Our starting pay is now $8 an hour. The county has had a bargain in the past nine years, a full-time unpaid director, 80 to 100 hours more per week. Her vehicle's used constantly with only reimbursing fuel. We have had an active board of members, most active in fundraising. And those who could not give that time have moved on. And I ask you to put aside your personal feelings and continue to award this bargain contract to Animal Lovers Assistance League. Thank you.
Thank you. Julia Brennan?
I'm Julia Brennan, and I live at 204 Mariners Way in Moyoc. I've lived in Currituck County since 1994, and I have, for many years, volunteered my services to the Animal Lovers League. And I proudly served as a director on the Board of Directors for about five years now. And when my daughter Carrie became old enough to volunteer, I thought, "What a wonderful way for her to serve and to learn." She, too, has volunteered over the years, and it has been a truly rewarding and growing experience for her. My daughter and I have been blessed to be associated with this wonderful organization, and to get to know Ginger Sykes very well, as we worked alongside her, watching her work long hours to organize adopt-a-thons and fundraisers, and just everything she's done in her total love and compassion for the animals. And one thing we quickly learned, that whatever she does, she does 110%. And then one day, my daughter asked me, when she was little, "Mommy, Ms. Ginger must make a lot of money, because she's always working." And I said, "Oh, no, honey. Ms. Ginger doesn't make any money at all. She volunteers, just like you and me. She does all of this for the love of the animals." And now, Carrie's 16, and she considers Ginger to be an outstanding role model for her. And I just wanted to say that as a non-paid volunteer, Ginger started out in 1991, and she has founded both of the humane organizations in the county. And I think, I was just going to say a lot of the things that she's already said, that we receive large donations from people who know that we're doing a good job, and they appreciate what we're doing, even if they're outside of Currituck County. And we have flourished over the last nine years. It's taken a lot of effort and hard work to build the type of public support that we have today, as in 2013, when we received over $110,000 in donations. And the folks who donate recognize the outstanding job that is being done at the shelter. And we're very grateful to our many volunteers who have worked hard to help the animals and this organization, and without them, our and this organization, and without them, our results could never be what they are today. There has, someone has come up with the idea of inmates working in the shelter, and I think Ginger addressed, you know, the cost involved. But I personally just felt like with the public coming in to like a mom adopting a puppy and, you know, waiting for the deputy to come out of the public bathroom with the inmate somehow doesn't get the warm and fuzzies, and I just really, I really can't see it personally, and I don't see how it's cost-effective. No, of course, I haven't talked to anybody about why or how it could be cost-effective. But I do think that that would be the situation, and I've just kind of tried to put myself into it as though that was happening to see how it would be. I know that my daughter would not be volunteering under those circumstances, and I don't know of any other parents who would allow their sons or daughters to volunteer under those I have a copy tonight of our two-page annual report that I would like to give to anybody who would like to see it, and I wanted to, we are all about serving, we're not about tooting our own horns, but I do have a list of our accomplishments over the last nine years, but I know I wouldn't have time to cite all of those. Thank you so much.
Ms. Brennan, you can give a copy to the county manager, and he'll get copies for us. Next is Jen Simons.
Jen Simons, 110 Windy Hill Court in Idlet. I would like to also speak to ALL retaining the contract for the animal shelter. I've been a volunteer and a worker there for the last three years. I'm dedicated. I give of my time freely, it's technical knowledge as well as helping out with the car shows, things like that. I would like to say that ALL has been given many awards over the years. The 2006 recipient of the Governor's Award for Outstanding Volunteer Service in North Carolina, 2007 and 2010 recipient of the Award for the Nonprofit Organization of the Year in Currituck County, 2011, the President Recipient of Governor's Medallion Award for Outstanding Volunteer Service in North Carolina, 2012, ALL Treasurer Frances Walker was awarded the Greg Shook Award for Exemplary Service to the Citizens of Currituck County. 2013, ALL President Ginger Sykes was awarded the Greg Shook Award for Exemplary Service to the Citizens of Currituck County. I would like to just say that I hope that ALL with all the dedicated volunteers, and I know there's many of us that care about the care of the animals, that I'd like to see them retain the contract. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Georgia Greggs.
Be short and sweet. I'm Georgia Greggs, 272 Brumsey Road in Moyoc, North Carolina. I've lived here for about four years now. I'm originally from Virginia Beach, Virginia. I worked there as an accountant. I'm retired, and I helped Frances Walker, Treasurer of ALL, Animal Lovers Assistance League, with the books. I helped her prepare for the 2013 audit, and I also did bank reconciliations for all 12 months. I checked off every check that was written out, every payroll check that was written out, and I just wanted y'all to know that Ginger Sykes was not paid any payroll checks. The only checks I saw written to her was reimbursements for gasoline or for the animal shelter for things that she had purchased, and I just wanted to state that because I saw it with my own eyes. And I also wanted to say that Frances Walker received the Order of the Longleaf Pine Award, which is the highest award in the state of North Carolina for volunteer services. Thank you.
Thank you. Karen Pierce.
I'm Karen Quigley Pierce at 5067 Carrituck Highway, Corn John. Commissioners, please keep as many restrictions on shooting ranges as possible. I am not against guns, been around guns and hunting all of my life. Of course, I want the people who use guns to be responsible and know how to use them. But a shooting range for six days a week, sunup to sundown, affects many more people than the ones who just border the property lines. It affects the quality of quiet contentment and peaceful lifestyle. Anyone who wants to practice shooting once or twice a season is much different than every day. My sister-in-law, who lives in Maple, lives next to a neighbor that was shooting on weekdays and weekends, and Mac and I were visiting on one of those days. I couldn't believe the noise. He was shooting bottles with gunpowder in them. It was just no way to get away from it. And please consider what we have as a quality of life in Currituck. And I don't know, I was wrong in the tractor today thinking about it. Why couldn't, you put everything else in an industrial park, put them in an industrial park. I mean, you put the adult entertainment there, put them right next to the adult entertainment. Nobody wants, nobody wants to live next to a shooting range. And that's all I have to say about that. But I'm not here at all the commissioners' meetings all the time, but I promise you, I'll watch you all constantly. And I want to thank the fellow Currituckians who have been speaking in favor of Teresa Willer. If the world had more people like her in this world, it would be a much better place. And also, another topic, someone should be held accountable for the vehicles that were lost in the ocean over on the beach. I have not heard anything about that, and I think it should be reported to the public. I read the newspaper, I listen to this, and I just think really somebody should be held accountable. And when I come up here tonight, I was not even aware that the ALL, the animal shelter is what I call it, I mean, I support them and I think they do a great job. And why do away with somebody who's doing a good job? Thank you.
Thank you. Dan, as she alluded to the automobile incident, could you, the report's been released to the public, evidently it hasn't been printed in the paper, could you just give a brief synopsis of, I mean, the Highway Patrol?
Well, the Highway Patrol has finished the report, and to best of my knowledge, they've cited the driver of that vehicle got, I believe, two, four, four citations?
I think it was four charges.
Four charges.
Very four charges.
Yeah. But again, it's not a county employee, so it's not something that I'm directly aware of, but I do understand that the driver of that vehicle has been charged.
And that record, anybody can have that?
Yes, they can.
And the vehicle, was it owned by the county?
It was not.
Does the county have any authority over that vehicle?
We do not.
And why is that?
Because it was duly titled to the Corolla Ocean Rescue Company who provides the service on the out-of-banks.
So, they insured it, they owned it?
They owned it, they insured it, and to best of my knowledge, they're working through the replacement with the insurance company. But Currituck County will not be paying the deductible. We won't be paying to have the vehicle replaced. In fact, we won't be paying a penny on anything involved with the incident at all. Again, it was not county folks, it was not county equipment, not county vehicle.
Can I, Chairman, if my, who paid the deductible for the radio? They paid the deductible for the radio, too?
They're paying, again, we're not paying any funds at all on this incident. They reported the radio went into their insurance, certain insurance company, so right now, they're paying the deductible for that.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have Larry, is that Marshall?
Michelle.
Michelle, okay.
I'm Larry Michelle. I live at 117 Waters Drive in Braveview Landing Subdivision. And I've come here to plead that we get something done with our streets. Our roads are in terrible shape. They haven't been repaired, you know, they get, you know, annual repair, but they haven't been paved in 20 years. They're full of potholes. There's places where we've had areas that collapsed under the road, they came in and dug up the road and filled it with rock and gravel, and now we've got a three-foot span that's open. I don't know how we can get around it. I'd really like to see, I, last time I came to the commissioners' meeting, it was, they said that they annually inspected all the roads. I'd like to be present when they come through to inspect the roads in our neighborhood, in fact, get a timeframe for that.
Those roads are state-maintained roads.
That is correct.
I rode through there today, and those roads are in desperate need of repair.
Yeah, I'm glad to hear that.
And they're not unlike a whole lot of other roads throughout the county. The commissioners can send a letter to the Department of Transportation and ask them, or the manager can make a phone call and ask for an onsite visit from the district engineer and have him come and look at those roads for you folks.
Okay.
And I think we'd be glad to facilitate that because the roads, they are in pretty bad shape.
I bicycle through there daily to see what's going on in the neighborhood, and it's a rough ride on the bicycle.
Well, one of the problems that we have is under the new roads formula, of course, we've had this problem before, the new roads formula, but under the new roads formula, basically, they've cut the maintenance money for roads in the rural areas. I mean, I don't even know how much it is. It was just a tremendous cut. And the new formula that they have now sends the money to your Rowleys, your Charlotte Mecklenburgs, or Winston Saloms, and we really struggle to get the state to recognize our roads here, even more so now than we did in the past. And it's really not a good situation for folks in the rural areas.
Doesn't the county commissioners put a request into our priority setting for which roads can be repaired and need to be repaired?
Not, yeah, we can ask them to come out here and meet and look at the roads, but they take it back and then they make the decision. We used to be able, years ago, prioritize the roads, but they've even taken that from us now.
That is correct. The Board of Commissioners do not prioritize road repaving, resurfacing. DOT used to come to you in the spring and get your concurrence and your sign-off on their secondary roads plan, but as part of the new structuring, that is no longer the way they're going to be doing business, and so this board will really have no say in the secondary road program at all. Or maintenance.
Mr. Scanlon, just a quick add to this, because I checked in with Mr. Scanlon here about a month ago because there was a road down in my district in Point Harbor that hasn't been paved since 1964, and it's actually breaking and crumbling. And if you could, because I requested you look in it, could you enlighten us on what you found out, because there was some formula they go by, the number of houses on the road, the type, I mean, they've got a formula that doesn't work very well for us here.
That is correct, and we, I believe that request was sent to DOT 40, 45 days ago, and we have yet to receive a response from them.
I mean, that was a road that hadn't been paved since 1964, and I said, "Hey, is there something we can do about it?" And that's been 45 days, and we've not heard anything. And they have some esoteric formula they come up with, and it's almost hard to...
Is there anything the voters can do to entice people to, you know? We're a group of 100 houses.
What you need to do is you probably need to call the county manager's office tomorrow and get the district engineer's phone number, and then you need to pass it around to all of your neighbors. And let them make a call to him and ask about your roads, and it's very likely you'll get a visit. But, you know, in the past, when you see those recycling machines where they're coming and scraping the asphalt up, and then they recycle it and put it back down, don't be surprised if they don't put it back down going forward, they're going to take it to Raleigh. I mean, we are not getting our roads addressed in northeastern North Carolina. Bottom line, the new formula that everybody's adopted in Raleigh stinks if you're in rural communities, and we have a struggle. But we will try to facilitate getting them to come out there to Braveview and meet with some of you, but I'm very serious about getting the phone number from the manager and passing it around.
Well, I haven't passed it around, but I had, I've called all the engineers, all the way down to the gentleman in Manio, that, you know, trying to get a response out of somebody, and it don't seem to...
The office in Eden is where he needs to call, isn't it, Mr. Scanlon?
Yes, it is.
If you'll call the county manager's office tomorrow, you'll get that phone number, and you pass it around.
Okay.
And let every husband and wife have it.
All 200 of them, plus the in-laws.
Okay.
And anyone over 16 who has a driver's license also.
Also, if you have, if I may add, like potholes or stuff like that, I've gotten calls before, and just our local, you know, they'll come out, I mean, obviously, the pictures of the roads were horrendous, but I know two or three subdivisions where they went in there and just, you know, patched holes. It's better than nothing.
Even at that, we had, we had three trucks and a tar trailer and probably seven people out there within the last week, and they put down three little patches about this wide, and I think they were training because that wasn't, that wasn't where the damage was at.
Well, let me say this, these guys locally in Maple, they have no money to do it. It has to go through the district and Raleigh. These guys in Maple, they work hard, and they do everything they can to try to fill the potholes, but I've even had conversations where they said, "Can you give me a list and prioritize them 1, 2, and 3, and we'll go till we run out?" So, that's how bad it is.
All right. Well, I appreciate it, and I'll get it with the county manager in the morning.
Please do. Thank you. Troy Moser.
Troy Moser, 112 South Street, Moyoc, North Carolina. I'm here today in support of the structure in an outdoor shooting range. I thought this might help. Even though there's a lot of misconceptions in the county, there's thousands of guns being sold in the county and brought into here every year. At our facility, where we, at the Currituck Shooting Club, we've conducted 147 classes for conceal and carry just this year, or last year, 261 free NRA one-two-step safety, handgun safety courses last year. Now, it's conflicting, so I had to kind of take a ballpark average, but 86% of Currituck County residents currently own a firearm. About 79% of those residents that own firearms own multiple firearms. A lot of our county has gone residential. These people that are owning these guns do not have a proper place to shoot, nor are they structured, safe, or at proper distances away from dwellings. I'm sure the Sheriff's Department gets calls every week dealing with somebody shooting. It's time that Currituck County addresses the situation, takes a look at it very meaningful, and gives our residents and this industry and this type of right, the Second Amendment right, more than just a passive opportunity to shoot and to practice. The most dangerous firearm out there is in the hands of a person that's not experienced or has practiced, or at least had the guidelines to do this. I beg the county commissioners in the county that all of the downsides, there's also a lot of the upsides. And businesses being brought into the county, being a small business owner, dealing with the county commissioners, the planning board, being a good citizen is all part of it. Doing it right, correct and right, the first thing, that's what our goal is across the board. We're not trying to create militia or anything more than just what's already recognized all the way out throughout the United States, even in the most restrictive states are doing this. We're surrounded. Currituck County, Camden, Currituck, Dare, or Camden, Dare, rest of the counties have these facilities. We do not. People are driving and sending their money up north of Virginia, C2 and other facilities. You hear it every day. We can bring business. This could be a very lucrative business if it's run structurally with county residents in mind and to be good stewards and good neighbors. Thank you very much.
Question.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Moser, let me ask you a question. Has anyone, and Mr. Greggs, maybe you can tell me, has anybody done a study on what it would cost? Well, first of all, has anybody done a study on how much, how big a building you need? Well, first of all, has anybody done a study on how much, how big a building you need? And what would it cost to put the proper?
Baffles.
Baffles, I guess, inside, on, on an indoor range?
Yeah, we currently, they're allowed in the county. Under the UDO, indoor ranges are currently allowed. The static problem about that is it takes hundreds of thousands of dollars to get the proper baffling, lead mitigation, and ventilation through a system. A building, even if it's fifty foot wide, could only handle approximately ten bays. Remember, there's safety requirements to also. Up, up in Virginia, the indoor shooting ranges are static position shooting arenas. They will not let you practice real world. They will not let you draw and shoot. They will not let you double tap transition. We, we, we train and we're, we're with females every day. And their number one concern is they're, they refuse to be a victim. Being out at a static range is not giving them the proper training to actually protect themselves or protect their families. And that's why an outdoor range is really a more, more real world, more realistic and better training all the way around.
I'm not advocating an indoor range as, as, as an alternative to an outdoor range. I'm looking into an alter, not an alternative, but a second choice.
To answer, to answer your question, about, it all depends on how many bays that you're looking for and the length, which for the sheriff's department is twenty-five yards to qualify, Kevin?
Yeah, and then we have like for the long guns, like shotguns and the other stuff. It's.
Fifty yards.
Yeah, fifty yards. You're talking a substantial investment. And I would have to say just with the target systems, lead mitigation and ventilation, it'd be very easy to find out, but it would be in the millions of dollars.
Okay, but if you had an existing building?
Yes, sir.
In Currituck, like there's a building in the lower end of the county that's fourteen thousand square feet. It's on the market for a half million dollars. That's a big building.
Yes, sir.
Now, is that something that's feasible that, are you saying that three hundred thousand dollars, you couldn't take an existing building?
Well, you got to remember normally an existing building in place is not even designed for a shooting range.
Okay, this is just a metal shell, concrete pad, whatever.
It would take a lot of ballistic protection and backdrops inside that.
Answer my question.
I do not know the cost.
Okay, just answer my question. Thank you.
Thank you. Sybil O'Neil.
Good evening. My name is Sybil O'Neil and I reside in Maple, North Carolina. The people of Currituck elect seven commissioners to represent us in many areas of the county's needs. We have learned that it is not the responsibility of the commissioners to get involved in personnel matters. The duty of this job is of the county manager. But in order to get anything done in the EMS matter, we have resorted to going to our representatives who hire the county manager. Several months ago, the community was outraged by the bullying and intimidation that the employees of the EMS have been, have been receiving by Robert Glover. They complained, they had meetings, they wrote letters. They sought out people on the outside to be their voice because they feared for their job. They are tired of the manipulation. The situation got so bad that the people stood up and spoke for these employees. We had to go before you, the commissioners, to be heard because the county manager could not do his job. The people are now paying for a study to be done to find out why Mr. Glover treats his employees in such a manner. It is a shame that it all had to come to this. Had the county manager done his job, been fair and not judgmental, disciplined his friend, Mr. Glover, instead of covering for him, he could have nipped this in the bud long ago. To have a study of this sort and allow Mr. Glover to continue to work and continue to bully and threaten is unacceptable. He should be put on administrative leave immediately. Tell me why other employees have been put on administrative leave with no formal charge and they had to quit their job to seek employment so they could earn a living. Read or Article Nine, Section nine oh five in the county personnel policy. You will find that you certainly can put him on administrative leave without going through loops and hoops as some would want us to believe. I would hope that the folks we hire would have a backbone to stand up to these bullying types and tell them that Currituck County does not accept this behavior and nor will we ever tolerate it. But let me also thank the ones on the board that have supported this and shown generally that they care. Thank you.
Larry Simmons.
Hello, my name's Larry Simmons. I live 163 Launch Landing Road in Braveview subdivision, Crawford Township. Seen you guys two weeks ago. Liked to open this up by saying, we're back. Okay? I've got a piece of paper here that I pulled off of social media yesterday that was written very well, I believe, by a very dear and close friend of mine, which their name happens to be on my shirt. I'd like to give it to somebody and the reason I would, because I didn't wear my reading last night and I can't see your names on your name tags there, just about it. And I would love to give it to someone besides the county manager and I'll explain why. The letter. The letter in essence says, talks about the investigation that went on with the EMS and Mr. Glover, the fire department, all this kind of stuff with the bullying. The thing that I don't understand, and I, you know, I'm just a dumb old redneck, you know, but, you know, how can the county manager and Mr. Glover sit in on the same meeting where the problem is? I mean, we're supposed to have an outside entity here trying to investigate this. So, so what, what does it happen? Mr. Glover, Mr. Scanlon sat up there and say, okay, we're supposed to have this meeting. Did you do anything wrong? Nope. You do anything wrong? Nope. Okay, meeting's over. And that's the information that I have. I see nothing has happened. I see Teresa Wheeler still sitting at home. I see Mr. Glover still at work drawing a paycheck that I pay for as well as the other county taxpayers here. I see you guys still sitting up there in our chairs, not doing anything at all that I'm aware of. I may be wrong, don't get me wrong. I'm trying not to eat up all my time like I did last week, so I'm going to leave you with that point. Also, I'd like to comment on one other thing. The gentleman here, Larry, I forget what his name is. I think he's the homeowners president of the same subdivision I live in. A lot of them pictures that y'all seen on the screen, a lot of them was taken right in front of my house. Okay? Some of the ruts and stuff like that. I ride a motorcycle. It's hard to on that road. It really is because you're dodging, darting. I've got a ditch in front of my house that it showed. If a car run off in that ditch, he's lost it. He's going to be buried. You're going to call the wrecker. You're not going back out of it. It's gone. It's total. I had one go in my ditch about four years ago. I believe it was. Had to call Lance to come get him. All right, the, the only other thing I have to say is, is that please, the taxpayers, we deserve an answer. We put y'all in your seats. The little group that I'm a member of, seven hundred, almost eight hundred members strong, we carry a lot of votes. Y'all have a good afternoon.
Thank you. Mike Shannon.
Mike Shannon, 204 Putt and Ridge Road. I basically just, I pulled this up off the North Carolina Legal Center dot com site and have the same question, why we don't have, you know, why don't we have some answers for this? This states that federal and state laws prohibit an employer from retaliating against an employee who reports or threatens to report an employer's unlawful activity or misconduct to appropriate authorities. It is also unlawful for an employer to retaliate for refusing to engage in illegal or unethical behavior. It is unlawful for an employer to retaliate against an employee who makes safety complaints or protests unlawful discrimination at the workplace or files a charge of unlawful discrimination. Why have these people been moved, fired, demoted, you know, and nothing's been done? Retaliating against an employee who speaks out their rights, speaks out against wrongful, unethical, or unlawful activity is unlawful. The Notification of Federal Employees Anti-Discrimination and Retaliation Act is a United States federal and state law that seeks to discourage federal managers and/or supervisors from engaging in unlawful discrimination or retaliation. It is properly called the No Fear Act. These people should not fear for their jobs if they're being bullied. Thank you.
Thank you. Richard LaBani.
My name is Richard LaBani. I currently live at 904 Wellfield Road in Elizabeth City. I've lived in Currituck County since nineteen seventy-one. I've just recently moved out for the first time. Miss it already. It's a way of life here for me. I'm here to talk about bullying. As the gentleman just read, it's against the law for someone to bully someone. And it is also against the law for anyone seeking help by any means or any entity, meaning county commissioners, county manager, legal counsel, anyone to assist them if they feel they're being bullied. So these employees do have the right to approach this board of directors, even though they are not in charge of personnel policies. Eight signs you're a bully. I pulled this up online as well. Sherry Gordon is the author of it. And here are the eight signs. A bully verbally abuses you. For instance, a bullying boss humiliates you in front of others. He also might shout, swear, or yell at you on a consistent basis or make offensive jokes at your expense. Verbally abusive bosses also make snide remarks or offer unfair criticism about you or your work. Intimidate you on a regular basis. Intimidating behavior may include threatening to fire you as a way to main power and control. It also can include threatening gestures or threats to harm you physically. Questions your adequacy and your commitment. Bosses question your adequacy by belittling your opinions and ideas. This may be done in private or in front of others. They may also blame you, your problems at work, while boasting that their skills are responsible for the good outcomes. And they may question your commitment to the job unless you work long hours and sacrifice your own personal time. Sometimes bosses will spy on you, even stalk you. They also may listen on private conversations, open your mail, go so far as to tamper your personal belongings. Undermine your work. Bosses who bully set realistic deadlines that are bound to cause failure. I can't even read anymore of these. The letters that were handed over to me and handed over to Kevin McCord. Every one of those letters embodies exactly what this says. It's disgusting to me that this man still works for this county. I don't live here. My family lives here, my kids live here, and for their sake, he needs to go. Thank you.
Robert Miles. All right. As we reported at our last meeting, an outside person is looking into every one of these allegations and charges. And if anybody has an incidence of retaliation or anything that they're willing to go on the record with, they can contact any one of these commissioners or the county attorney or the human resources officer or human resources position. And I'm telling you right now, if anybody's got a incident, they're willing to put on the record, all you got to do is give one of us a call. That's all it takes.
We can't hear you.
Yeah. Well, the, Mr. Petrie was inquiring about the, the person that's looking into it. Is the human resources officer, the attorney from Elizabeth City, John Lighty, who is a personnel, I guess that's his kind of area of expertise. And the young lady in the county attorney's office, the county manager, the county attorney, and Robert Glover have not, are not, and will not be a part of any investigation or any conversations that anybody in the EMS department wishes to have. Every one of those people are going to be contacted or they may have already been contacted. And they'll have an opportunity to come forward to the outside entity and, and go on the record. If they don't take advantage of it, then I don't, there's nothing else we can do. But this is the opportunity and it has been set in place and it is in motion and it is ongoing until every single person in the EMS department is afforded an opportunity to sit down and go on the record. That's what we announced to you at our last meeting and it is ongoing and, and it is happening as we speak. So until that is completed, there's nothing that anybody can say other than what is ongoing. So we have heard each and every one of you. We have listened and we are moving forward to find out the root of the issues that have been brought forward. And that's where we are. Next, we have Chris, is that Merrick?
Yes, sir. I am approaching the commissioners tonight concerning ordinance ten one twenty-eight, which is.
Please give us your address.
I'm sorry, my name is Chris Merrick. I live in Kitty Hawk, North Carolina. I'm a co-owner of Ocean Atlantic Rentals with Blake Buchert. And that's at 107 Shores Avenue, Point Harbor, folks. We have two businesses as well in Corolla. We brought some of our beach equipment with us tonight to show you. If you haven't seen it before, it's not what you buy at a, at a cheap disposable store. And I thank you all for receiving my email earlier this week and Mr. O'Neil responding. The ordinance is removing beach equipment that's unsafe off the beaches. Lazy tourists and other folks are leaving trash and beach equipment. And it's my understanding, it's in the way of emergency vehicles is a big concern. And I just want you to know, myself and my partner and the other equipment rental companies that are represented here tonight understand the ordinance and we don't expect unsafe equipment to be left blocking anything on the beaches. Our concern is this expensive handmade equipment in North Carolina is being thrown into the dumpsters and taken away with other equipment. And it's expensive. The woman who was affected seven days ago in Corolla lost a dozen of these chairs and four of these umbrellas. So we all know the, the size of those houses up there and the, the large groups that are staying there. So I just want you to know the scope of the fourteen hundred dollars of equipment that she got to be responsible for this past week. There's also an impact to an equipment rental company of the rentals for the next twelve weeks, which is about four thousand dollars for me for the rest of the summer. And we can't replace that. I don't want special treatment. I just want to plead to you this evening because we've spoken to staff. Last year, there was individuals who lived in Corolla who were removing the equipment. They were kind enough in some of the circumstances to let us know. We went to a dumpster and we, and we got the items. We know the equipment's been taken because our customers are calling us screaming, of course, the next morning. The good folks who are removing the equipment have been kind, but they understand, or they made it clear to us in a meeting this spring that they cannot text us. They can't contact us in any way to remove our equipment.
These are county contractors too.
Mm-hmm, county contractors. Our equipment is clearly screen printed. Our equipment is clearly screen printed. It's obvious that it's commercial equipment. I just want the county to know that I don't think there's a win in the current situation that we're using. The customer's furious. This particular customer, four years a customer to us, is never coming back to Currituck County is what she's told us. They are sure to use social media and every other avenue to share their negative experience, and they were warned appropriately. I want you to know the subcontractors that did their job. They tagged the equipment, and these folks were lazy. So, I want to call it what it is, but I want you to know that there's going to be instances where this happens, and I'm sorry, my time is up. Thank you very much.
No, let me ask you this. Your issue is the fact, because of the quality of the equipment that you have, you can't just go out and replace it, so you have a vacancy...
Yes, sir.
In other words, if you lose 12 chairs, you've lost 12 rentals because you can't get new ones before the season's over.
Yes, sir. We bought for the season.
And we've lost the value of the equipment as well. It just, there's no chance for us getting it back. There's no, there's nobody's even trying.
On Hatteras Island, the Park Service handles the same policy that you handle, or a very similar one. They're kind enough to reach out to us. Other towns and other counties are kind enough to understand that, you know, safe passage needs to be observed, but in a neighborly way, they reach out. And it's been very hard-nosed and harsh this year from this county, and I don't understand why, but it feels very anti-small business for us.
You didn't have that issue with the contractor last year?
That's correct.
They would let you get your equipment back?
We'd at least have a courtesy call. And say it's somewhere where it is. The irony of this thing is, we're based, and we're based, our corporation is based in Point Harbor. We've got warehouses, offices there, all the equipment is listed with Currituck County, so, you know, now you guys are not only taking this stuff, and then we're getting a tax bill for it at the end of the year for a business property. So, that's just kind of ironic.
Yes, sir.
What's the policy in Duck and Southern Shores? When we started this policy, we talked to Merrick Dombrowski.
Yes, sir.
What does he do with you guys?
There's a courtesy-friendly relationship there. Very small community type of relationship where we work with each other. Southern Shores is a very similar stance as this county, and it's been a much friendlier place to do business.
I haven't lost anything.
We've tried to adopt our policy from what they do or what they did, and so we've had to listen to the people that live up there that were, as you rightly say, people are lazy and they leave it out there, which jeopardizes your stuff.
Right.
But by the same token, on the other hand, we're getting criticized because we have an ordinance, then we don't take care of it, and we don't follow it. So, I guess my question is, that Southern Shores and Duck is friendlier, and we're trying to adopt what we're doing, Mr. Scanlon, is that right? You know, we kind of adopted our plan after theirs?
To some degree. A major difference between last year and this year is the board in the winter amended our ordinance and provided a smaller window for contractors to be able to get on the beach, which we did not have that window last year. My understanding is the rental companies met with our contractor and requested that if he would either text or call in some fashion when he ran across to their equipment to give them notification, where they either could call the property owner, or they themselves can go recover the equipment. In the window that the contractor has to collect or to travel the whole beach, it just, there isn't enough time for him to do, the contractor, for them to do the job and to provide that courtesy to the rental companies. It just, he's got, I think, an hour and a half to traverse the beach. That hour and a half requirement was not in place last year. As these gentlemen mentioned, the items were tagged, they're tagged at least 36 hours before an item is removed from the beach. So, in the instances they're talking about, the property owner was duly notified, and they did not take the information. I can see them shaking their heads.
No, sir.
They're not the property owner.
That's not correct.
Or, excuse me, the person who rented it and put the material on the beach, it's tagged. It's tagged on a Monday, and we don't pick up till Wednesday morning, so they have ample time to go down and see the tag, that advises them of what the ordinance is and that the items need to be taken back from the beach in the morning. Now, the ordinance, as written, does allow, or does have a provision in there, that if the rental companies would like to go onto the beach within the hours of, I think it's 5:30 or 6 o'clock, I mean, they, the rental companies on Tuesday night can certainly ride the beach, and if they see their equipment out there that has a tag on it, they certainly can collect their equipment. What they've asked for is allowed, they've asked for, number one, for the contractor to give them forenotice, which again, we just don't have the time to do that, and number two, would they be allowed access to or have their equipment set aside, which the ordinance just does not have a provision to do that. I discussed this with one of the gentlemen here and suggested that if we wanted to go in that direction, it would require some kind of an ordinance amendment, but they do have a right, the rental companies, they can go, they know our tagging schedule, they know our collecting schedule, they can go out prior to the contractor going on the beach within the windows that's allotted, and they can drive the beach, and again, if they see their equipment that has tags on it, they certainly can pick their equipment up.
Well, I want to comment that since those hours were adopted, I have had calls complaining about the window is too narrow to cover the length of the beach for these guys like these and other people that are doing things out there. And I think that has created, a lot of what's created, the problem is the narrowing of the window. And as if they said last year, the contractor was allowing them to get their stuff, I don't think that part of the ordinance changed. This year did it.
The contractor last year did a couple things that were not allowed or not permissible under the ordinance that we are learning this year with a different contractor. The contractor last year allowed people to put the items up against the stairs or put them at the dune line and leave them overnight, which the ordinance does not speak to. He was allowing, I guess, folks to go to the dumpster and to recover items, which the ordinance really doesn't speak to. So, we found that the contractor last year was providing some courtesies that the ordinance really does not speak to or allow.
Well, the bottom line is, is we've got to do something to fix it.
Yeah. We'd like to do it quick, since the summer's here and we're busy.
These guys are trying to earn a living. They're offering a convenience to the people that are visiting here, and we...
Between 5:30 and 7 o'clock.
If the ordinance doesn't speak to it, then why can't they let them get their equipment? If it doesn't speak to it, prohibition or an admission, it just doesn't speak to it. So...
If they offered to drive anywhere as far as it takes to get their stuff back...
We drive to Knott's Island where the subcontractor is.
It was a no. It was a total no.
Yes, sir. They can go out Tuesday night between 5:30 and 7 o'clock, they can ride the beach, any of their equipment that has a tag on it, they can go ahead and collect because the contractor won't be on the beach until early the next morning. And the ordinance does allow them to do that.
Let's...
Do we get a chance to address it?
I'd really have to see how these guys do the tagging system, because if stuff, if we're only allowed out there until 7:30 at night and people are on the beach after that, and they leave their equipment out there, it's going to get tagged again, yeah.
5:30 till 7 o'clock at night.
But the contractor's out like at 2 o'clock in the morning, isn't he?
To, no, he's got, he's got a time limit in the morning that he can go into. He's not out there at 2 o'clock in the morning. He's got a window Tuesday morning, Wednesday morning that he's got to get through.
Yeah.
But he's out there between 5:30 and 7:00 Monday night doing the tagging, and there's a comparable time Wednesday morning that he's got an hour and a half to go out Wednesday morning and collect.
So, if he tags it on Monday night, he's not going to be back for Wednesday morning?
Correct.
If we had a definite time of when he's actually collecting equipment off the beach...
I can tell you that time.
Okay.
We can get there ahead of time and...
I don't want these guys losing their equipment. I want a definitive answer as to how we fix it.
Well, they are allowed to, they're allowed to go on the beach and to recover their equipment before that it's removed from the beach. That's allowable right now.
If that doesn't work, I'd like to go somewhere and find my equipment that's been thrown in the dumpster or the Currituck landfill.
Yeah, I just...
I don't even know where. Where does it go?
It goes into a dumpster.
Where's the dumpster located?
Well, I don't think he wants some dumpster diving.
I'll dumpster dive for $1,400, no problem.
Yeah.
We're not looking for everybody in Corolla to start going to the dumpster locations, to start going into the dumpsters.
But if their stuff is clearly delineated, show me.
It's very easy.
If it's clearly delineated...
This is the logos.
Similar businesses have the same logo on their chairs and umbrellas. I mean, if you can't tell, and these guys, these contractors go out and they tag every single piece of equipment with a tag, which takes, it takes time. Takes a lot of time. So, don't tell me they can't shoot somebody a text. That's all we asked to begin with, was the contractor to just shoot us a text.
From the three big round companies...
And we'd go get it.
We asked for one point person to be texted. They're also taking photo documentation of when they're tagging, is what they've told me as well. Sounds like a whole lot of time and a whole lot of formality in a small community like this where you could just shoot one text to Sam from Just For The Beach, who asked to be a point person on this, when instead, we've been getting back just this no can do, we're going to punish you from the county.
Let me ask you a question. So, if somebody sends you a text, is he supposed to send you a text for every chair, every location?
No, sir.
Just identifiable equipment.
Just, I'm in Whalehead Beach and...
Multiple locations up and down the beach. Send a text at every location. I'm trying to understand why, if he's not out there till Sunday or Monday, Monday night, and he's not going to be back till Wednesday, and you're allowed to go out there Tuesday night from 5:30 to 7:00, and go right down to the beach and you'll see your stuff sitting out on the tags and pick it up?
The same equipment may or may not be there. It transverses back and forth, all day long, all night long.
But you'll see the tags stuck.
Mr. Chairman, can I recommend that county staff get with the contractor and meet with the rental companies to see if we can't resolve the issue?
Can we get some common sense into this? I mean...
That's where I was going with it, Mr. Scanlon, and I'm glad you brought that up.
That'd be great for us, too.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
The manager will get with the contractors and with you guys, and y'all will work out a resolution, and you can email me and let me know when you get it, that it's working.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Now, does, I know, I've got Rob, and I can't get the last name?
It's Rob Schreier. Money's Worth Equipment Rental. I'm from Kill Double Dose. We have a 4,000 square foot operation in Corolla. We have a 2,500 square foot operation in Harbinger. Thank you for the steps you've all just taken. We appreciate that. In the meeting that our three companies had with the contractor, Just For The Beach offered to be the point location for dropping equipment. We've been in this business for 25 years. We operate from Virginia Beach through Hatteras Village. In Virginia Beach, the city has a drop lot for equipment. We have a number of businesses that go to that drop lot to pick up their seized equipment. On Hatteras Island, we've been dealing with the Park Service since 1997. They have a pickup point in Buxton. Customer calls us, they've lost their equipment. A few questions later, we know we need to send somebody down to Buxton to look for our equipment. The bottom line is, none of the governmental entities that we've ever dealt with have simply thrown the equipment in a dumpster. And as Chris said, this is expensive equipment. It's made here in North Carolina. It's got long lead times. It's not items that we can replace. So, certainly thank you for consideration and hope that we can, you know, move this ahead of the present state that it's in.
Thank you. Closing the public comment, and we're moving to the next item on the agenda, is a presentation by Chris Turner with the North Carolina Wildlife Resources Commission. He's going to talk to us a few minutes about the proliferation of coyotes. In Currituck County, we've been getting complaints about coyotes eating people's cats in their yard, eating everything. I mean, they're just, we need a road runner to get them, keep them busy.
I understand.
So, I'll turn it over to you now.
Okay. I'm Chris Turner. I'm a district wildlife biologist with the North Carolina Wildlife Resources Commission. I work our District One, which is 13 northeastern counties, including Currituck County. I actually reside in Chilwong County, so I'm kind of in the middle of the area that I work. I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. I think I was here probably about a year and a half ago, so I kind of wanted to just kind of touch this as an update. I've got some, a few slides in the beginning that I would like to just kind of run through as a refresher on coyotes. And then, I want to spend a little bit additional time at the end, probably more than last time, regarding some of the tools in the toolbox, per se. So, anyway, I'll begin with that. I wanted to acknowledge Colleen Olfinbuckle, who is our black bear and fur bear biologist. She has compiled a lot of this information that I'm going to present tonight. So, I've kind of done some of the updates, but I just want to give her credit. She does a great job with keeping up with the status of different species. So, anyway, I think probably at this point, a lot of people have seen a coyote before. You know, you may have seen one here in Currituck. We certainly have an opportunity to see one almost anywhere at this time. Over the last 30-plus years, we've continued to get expansion across the state and across the southeast. Usually, what you'll see when you see a coyote, you might think it's a dog, you know, 25 to 40 pounds, a big coyote is 40 pounds. But you can certainly see some different colors. We get some coyotes that actually look black. They got a black pigmentation, particularly when they just start to expand into a new area. So, we probably don't see as many black ones as we have, you know, in the last 25 years, but that's always a possibility, some different variations in color. I think it really tells the story, when you look at pre-European settlement, we had coyotes in the central part of North America, relegated to the plains and the desert counties. But as time has passed, we've certainly seen an expansion through most of North America. While the expansion, we've had major habitat changes. As we continue to increase the number of people in this country, we tended to make habitat more suitable for something as adaptable as a coyote. I think, one thing that I'm going to touch on in just a few minutes, is the ability of coyotes to cover a large area, to disperse as part of their breeding cycle and part of their life cycle, really kind of opens the door for expansion over time. I showed this last time. We have kept records about species occurrences in this state for many years, and if you look at North Carolina, around 1983, '85, we had documented coyote sightings in several counties, two in the western Piedmont and two on the coastal plain. I think it's worth noting that we had, actually had coyotes documented in additional counties much prior to that, with occurrences in 1938 in Gaston County, in 1970 in Wake County. You know, there were documented coyotes. Whoop. There we go. But I'm going to kind of run through, and you can kind of, you can kind of get the picture real quickly, as we move into the year 2000, we have coyotes documented in most of the 100 counties in North Carolina. By 2005, they were documenting all 100 counties, and by 2009, we had actually documented coyotes on the Outer Banks. At this time, I've had reports of coyotes as far as Corova, Corolla, all the way down to Hatteras Island as well. So, we have coyotes that have basically made their move statewide at this point. The biggest reason that we see coyotes now in the southeast doing very well is that they are very adaptable. Being canids, being canines, they're actually, they're actually omnivorous, meaning they don't just have to eat plants, they can eat animals as well. They eat fruits during part of the year. I've had crop depredation issues regarding coyotes. So, it's not just, it's not just small mammals that they're partaking of. They can make a go almost anywhere. Small mammals, sometimes in residential areas, certainly may include domestic cats and small dogs. But generally, we're looking at a native diet, a wild diet, of insects, fruits, berries, and small mammals. I think the behavior that we see from coyotes, it allows them to coexist with people, whether we like it or not. Urban coyotes are a fact of life across this country. There was actually a radio telemetry study that I've seen in the city of Chicago many years ago, where they actually collared coyotes within Chicago and looked at their long-term outcomes, looked at their habits within close proximity to people. Basically, they have a learned tolerance of people. They can, they can, they don't mind hanging around us if they've got what they need... need around us. You know, I think one of the things that, that the whole country's looked at over, over a long period of time has been the, the potential for eradicating coyotes. Back when coyotes were predominantly in the, in the plains, many states had serious predator removal studies, I mean predator removal activities, that basically the attempt was to get the last one. I don't believe that's possible, simply because you, you have to take at least 70% of the standing population just to drive it down. I mean, that's been shown. And at that point, you would have to maintain that very high level of harvest to, to keep it at the level that you, that you desire. That's far from eradication. I think one of, one of the reasons that, that coyotes are so prolific is that they have long dispersal distances. Dispersal is when a coyote leaves the place that it was born and travels long distances to make a place of its own, to establish a home range in another place outside of the area that it was born, where its parents live and where, where its siblings are. I think you, you can see this, this is a good example of a coyote that was actually trapped in Terrell County some, some time ago, that wound up after dispersing, wound up in Greensboro. That's probably a straight-line distance of about 120 miles. A recent study in Fort Bragg has used radio satellite transmitters to, to actually show what happens to coyotes on Fort Bragg, you know, Cumberland County. And this is a good example of one that I believe was collared sometime in March of, I'm not sure what year, but March of that year, that by July was in Northern Virginia. You're, you're talking about long distances. I think what, what's interesting about this to me is that when you take one animal and you have an idea of what that one animal does, you can, you can multiply that out along the entire population, and you can see we have constant interchange from one side to the other. I, I think that interchange really kind of, kind of draws us to where we are locally. Urban, urban coyote human interactions are certainly an important part of, part of what I deal with. I deal with lots of wildlife interactions, not just coyotes. Obviously, you, you certainly get calls in Currituck with, with these concerns. Typically, coyotes around residential areas, it's, it's a food-driven issue. Certainly unsecured food, since coyotes don't mind eating table scraps, don't mind eating pet food, don't mind eating things that you find around people's houses. It, it actually makes a, makes a big difference for how tolerant coyotes are. So, where the food is, is where they go, plus you get the constant interchange over, over the course of the year. I think it is worth noting that attacks are rare across the country. Not to say that it has not happened, but we don't have any unprovoked attacks in North Carolina at this time.
Do they get rabies, and can I shoot them?
Yes, yes and yes. We, they, they certainly can, can get rabies, just like any mammal can. This is a 2013 summary of, of all the rabies submissions for, for, for North Carolina. I updated it for this year on the, basically, I guess, the veterinary website for the state. You can see, we've, we've had about 14 positive coyotes over the course of, of 30 years in this state. So, we, as far as rabies goes, there's certainly the potential there, but there's certainly higher potential in a lot of, in a lot of other species. The tools that we use to manage a population in this state include trapping and hunting. We have a regular trapping season, a season set by the Wildlife Commission. We also have the, the options for depredation permits. If individuals are getting property damage on their property, there's certainly recourse for dealing with individual animals for that. There's also recourse for dealing with diseased or aggressive animals, as, as it applies to individual animals. Hunting is now year-round, even at night. That was something that happened, I think, two years ago. That was, that was first approved and allowed. We've been able to use electronic calling devices for some time for coyote hunting. There have been five counties in the, the current regulation digest that do not allow hunting at night. Those counties are, are south of Alamo Sound, and I'm, I'm going to touch that again in just a second, but there have been some restrictions on night hunting.
Sir, excuse me.
Yes, sir.
I read, didn't some of the counties stop hunting because of the red fox or the, the red wolf?
Yes, sir. There, there's a temporary federal injunction right now that has stopped all coyote hunting in five counties that are part of the red wolf restoration-
That's what you were referring to there, is those five?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Just real quickly, I think the last time I was here, the, the hunting harvest was about almost 32,000 animals statewide. You can see that's increased every year. This year, we were down somewhat as far as what has been reported through survey, but the trapping harvest continues to rise. I think one thing that's worth noting is that the trapping harvest continues to rise, but if you look at trapping licenses over a long period of time, from the 1940s to the mid 2000s, I, I think it's very clear that the number of people who actively trap for recreation has declined quite a bit. I think it pretty much, you see a peak in the 70s and 80s, and then a severe decline, but it's on the rise. Hunting and trapping is useful not just for, for managing the population, as far as taking animals on an annual basis statewide, but it also is a, is a good way to remove individual animals that, that may be a problem at some point. It also kind of keeps coyotes not wanting to be around people. We have a, an open hunting season with no bag limit, so they can be hunted year-round currently in, in 95 counties. So, I, I certainly think that's an important tool in the toolbox along with trapping. Far as solutions go, I, I think awareness, which you, you certainly have that here. I think awareness that we have coyotes, and you can never say that there's not one around somewhere, particularly in the rural counties that we have in northeastern North Carolina. They're, they're certainly here. I think it, it certainly belies everybody who, who lives in a rural area to be, to be on top of things regarding food sources in their yard. I, I think a classic recommendation that I make to a lot of people is if you're feeding pets outside, you're feeding a lot of things. That's, that's just a typical issue that I see. If you only feed what the pets are going to eat at that given time, there's certainly not a lot of surplus that's, that's left overnight that might attract the wildlife to the property. That's, that's kind of a standing recommendation. That, that goes with awareness. I think one issue with dealing with, with coyotes inside city limits is certainly there are local ordinances that, that do not allow that, because you can't discharge a firearm everywhere. So, that's, you know, I, I think it comes down sometimes to trapping, sometimes through a depredation permit when there's property damage involved, or when there's an issue with an aggressive or a sick animal. I think where, where we are in this state is, we've certainly got coyotes, as everybody knows at this point. We're, we're in a point now to maintain the tools in the toolbox that we can manage the population through hunting and trapping. We manage individual animals that are in nuisance or damaged situations, certainly disease-type situations or aggressive animal situations. We're, we've got, certainly have ways of dealing with that as well locally. I think one of the biggest things that we always have to keep in mind is that with most issues, prevention is a key. I've seen a lot of situations that, once it started, it was allowed to continue to go, and eventually became an issue for more, more people than just one. That, that's pretty typical in, in residential-type areas. One, one person doing the wrong thing can certainly open the door for everybody to, to feel the effects of that, particularly when it comes to wildlife nuisance issues.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Yes, sir.
Is it my understanding that the hunting season, you can hunt year-round?
Yes, sir.
But you can't trap?
That's, that's correct. That you, they can, you can trap within the trapping season for fur bear species, but you cannot trap year-round for fur bear species.
Why, if you, if you have a problem, why wouldn't you allow trapping year-round, just like hunting?
If, if there is a problem, that, that problem can be addressed through a depredation permit that does allow trapping of that individual animal that's causing the problem. That's the depredation law. So, trapping is allowed year-round through depredation permits, which, which are issued free of charge. I'm going to, I'm going to hit something real quick, that there are certainly private individuals who are, have been certified through testing to issue depredation permits on behalf of the state to handle issues on private ownership. So, there's certainly a tool there regarding removing individual animals. If you ever go to our homepage, it's ncwildlife.org. On the homepage, there's a section at the top that says "Have A Problem." Through "Have A Problem," you can pull down a list of WDCAs. Those are Wildlife Damage Control Agents with a pull-down list by county. So, there are people who are certified through testing to issue depredation permits, and you can, you can pull down a list of those individuals by county. Currently, there are five Damage Control Agents listed in Currituck County. There's a Trapper Assistance List, who during the regular trapping season certainly can offer their services with a trapping license in order to trap on, on somebody's property with written permission. Currently, there are 12 signed up in Currituck County who have said that, hey, I, I trap coyotes. You know, I, I focus on coyotes. I'm willing to, to help people. If, if somebody gives me a call, you know, all they need is written permission and, and the place to do it, that's legal to do it. There's actually 118 licensed contacts in Currituck County. Those are licensed trappers who, who through survey have said that they're willing to trap different fur bears. So, that, that's certainly a, certainly one of the resources, I think, that you can get off of our website. Just, I, I pulled up our website. This is a screenshot, and it's, it may be kind of hard to see, but if you see the, the section that says "Have A Problem or Question," underneath that, it says "Contact a Wildlife Damage Control Agent," and that's, takes you to the trapping page, which gives you the list of licensed trappers who have said that they are willing to trap coyotes. It also takes you to a page that gives you a pull-down list of Damage Control Agents by county as well. I think this, this was put out, I think, in 2012. It's a publication. It's a really good summary of the status of coyotes and foxes in the state of North Carolina. So, if, if you have, if you have any specific things, it, it's a, it's a pretty neat read. It gets into a lot of the biology. It also gets into legal statuses. It also gets into, into the law. Yes, sir.
Can you send us a few copies of that?
I, I can email you the link. I think it's about 112-page document.
Email it to the county manager.
I sure will. I'll, I'll make sure you get a copy of that.
Because we, we do get calls on occasion. I had an incident down Lower Currituck where a lady's dog got ate.
Yes.
And it's very traumatic, and-
I believe I spoke to her.
Yeah. So, you know, it's a big issue for some people, and, and I see them everywhere. I've seen them in, in my backyard. I've seen them all over the place where I live.
Right.
Crossing the roads everywhere. They're everywhere.
Well, I tell you, one, one of the things I think that we always have to, you know, we've, we've kind of looked at this all the way from when it kind of started in this state, all the way to now, and the story's not finished. I think the, the biggest thing that we can do is, is to maintain all the tools, to make sure that we, we continue to have all the options that are available to people to use, not just with individual animals that are a problem, you know, per se. I mean, sometimes a nuisance animal can be a big problem, but to, to have the ability to, to deal with population management over time regarding trapping and hunting. So, that's, that's, that's kind of where we are, where we are now. I can certainly send, send this, this publication through to you. I certainly encourage everybody to look at our website and refer people right, right to that site, because there's certainly, the, the information is there and the contacts are there to deal with, 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 I would, I'm going to say, almost every single situation.
Well, we, we need to get that information about, you said there's 118 trappers, there's five people that can do the special permit.
Yes, sir.
We need to get some of that information and, and find out who they are, where they are, and get that information out.
Okay. That's, that's available on our website, and I can, I can send you some, some things, I think, that'll help, help with putting that out there. I just wanted to make a special note. If you look at the tab right there, not the Sina Bear tab, that's another talk. We can talk about that later.
We'll save that one for another night.
Yeah, that's, that's another night.
That's not tonight.
I understand. But there, there's actually an Animal Control Officer and Wild Animals publication that provides some, some really well-defined guidelines regarding animal control officers, which are often the front line in a lot of these phone calls, that, that basically make sure that the options are laid out for them as far as dealing with different situations that they may run into, ranging from damage control issues. Nothing to say that an animal control officer cannot be a Damage Control Agent and issue permits if they choose to, as an, as an agent. They don't have to, but they certainly could go that route. But it also gets into a permit that, that basically authorizes then with a state permit to do removals of, of aggressive and diseased wildlife as well. It just puts everything right in the same place so that we can keep it, you know, on the same page with everybody. This is my information, my contact information. Anybody can call me anytime. I deal with, with quite a few phone calls from 13 counties regarding not just coyotes, but a lot of issues. I'm there to provide technical guidance and, and advice. I do, I make site visits to places that need a site visit, you know, where we can sit down and say, here's, here's where you need to take this issue. I make the information available to people if, if they'll give me a call. So, you can call me anytime. That's my office number there. And I, I just wanted to, to leave it right there. Feel free to call me anytime or refer anybody who calls you to me. I'll be glad to help get them in the, in the right direction, so.
All right. Anyone have any questions of Mr. Turner? Any commissioners have any questions of Mr. Turner? We've got a whole bunch of stuff to get going-
I understand.
...to move on.
Yes, sir.
We appreciate your time and, and you sitting here with us and bringing this information forward.
Well, I appreciate the invitation, and just let me know if I can be of any assistance to you. I'll make sure that, that I, I get some, some stuff headed this way.
Thanks a whole bunch.
Okay. Thank you very much. One, one other thing I was going to mention is we've, I'm not going to get into a lot of details about the five counties. Dare, Beaufort, Hyde, Terrell, what's the other county? Washington. Those five counties are where there's a temporary injunction in place, where there's currently no coyote hunting allowed by temporary injunction, federal injunction. There will be a, a public hearing that will be coming up later on in June, that if you watch our website, if, if you have any interest in how all that's proceeding, I, I encourage you to take a look. I think that's a good place to get some information regarding that issue.
Okay.
Okay?
Thanks a lot.
Thank you very much.
Next presentation. If y'all got coyotes, this is your man. Thanks again. Next presentation by Jennifer Albanese, Interfaith Community Outreach. Jennifer. No Jennifer. Going once, going twice. Having said that, we, we have got to have a five-minute break, folks. All right. Next agenda item is public hearing. Consideration and action on PB 90-07, Pine Island PUD. Requested amended sketch plan use permit to allow six additional lots, reconfigure the Beach Club property and Lot 2R, removal of 3.35 acres of commercial allocation from the Racket Cup Club lot, and re-establishling three acres commercial allocation north of the fire station on the west side of NC 12, Tax Map 128, Parcels 2D and 2E, Tax Map 127, Parcel 3M, Poplar Branch Township. This is a special use permit- This is a, uh, special use permit, so anyone that wishes to speak in favor of or in opposition to this agenda item needs to come forward and be sworn. Ask you to place your left hand on the Bible, raise your right hand. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do too.
Thank you. Mr. Woody, it's yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You may have covered the case in that agenda description, actually. Um, this is, uh, the Pine Island Plan Unit Development, which is in the Corolla, or the Poplar Branch, Outterbanks Township in Corolla. Uh, the property is located in a full-service area, uh, according to our land use plan, which does support, uh, higher intensity development. Currently, it is, um, part of the Pine Island PUD, which was approved, um, in the early 90s, and is a total of 366 acres, to give some context of the PUD. It got, it has 340 units, so it has a project density of about one unit per acre. So considering the land area, it's actually a fairly, uh, undense development. Uh, and this particular request, as you mentioned, Mr. Chairman, they are relocating commercial area, relocating some open space area, adding some additional, uh, units, but none of that, um, causes any issues with the parameters in which the PUD is allowed to exist in. So, um, they are proposing a total of 30 acres of commercial. They have a maximum of 36. There's still additional commercial acreage, uh, that exists within the PUD. Open space, they're gonna have 142 acres of open space, um, required to have 128, so they have excess open space that remains. Uh, this particular PUD is serviced by the Southern Outterbanks Water System, the Pine Island, uh, Currituck wastewater system, so it is on public water and sewer. Um, and in this, and as you mentioned in the, in the agenda request, what this effectively does is it takes an oceanfront parcel, um, and it creates six residential lots on that parcel, um, that reconfigures open space, and it relocates commercial allocation. So you have the creation of the six lots on the oceanfront parcel. Um, there is a, uh, a beach club that is operated by the Property Owners Association. That beach club will remain. It does continue to, it will continue to exist on one of the lots, uh, so the community still has that oceanfront facility, there's a swimming pool there and a small clubhouse. The Pine Island Racket Club, which is an amenity on the west side of NC 12, that will be, uh, provided to the association, um, as part of this amendment, so that Pine Island Racket Club will become open space and be the property of the association. And then you have three acres of commercial that's being relocated from this area, where the houses are being created, to a parcel of land that is just south of the Ocean Club Center South, near the Yopon Lane, Currituck Beach Access. So again, you're creating a three-acre commercial parcel in what is ba, really an appropriate location for commercial adjacent to an existing shopping center and a, a public beach access. One thing to point out is there is a Currituck County Emergency Beach, Beach Access and Hatteras Ramp located at this, uh, site of the subdivision of the six lots are being created. Uh, that is slightly impacted, but they are, uh, re-establishing that, so we're not losing the beach access. It's just being, uh, uh, slightly relocated to accommodate this development, so no issues with that, and they'll have to do that before the final plat is recorded. Uh, this is a use permit, and the staff recommended findings are included in the case analysis. I'm not gonna go through all of those, other than to say that generally, um, the proposed uses are just a continuation of oceanfront, uh, residential structures, probably similar to what you approved in the Pine Island Reserve Development. Um, again, the commercial allocation adjacent to the existing shopping center beach access is a logical place to have commercial development, and no, and no real changes in the open space allocation in the PUD. So, uh, staff doesn't see any issues with issuing the use permit. The TRC reviewed this and did recommend approval of this application. Uh, conditions of approval include establishing, or re-establishing the, the emergency beach access, um, including a 20-foot easement, um, a pedestrian easement and access be provided along the western side of NC 12 Phase 1 commercial tract, and a pedestrian crossing to the Southern Beach Access, and that's up in the commercial area to make sure you're getting people, you know, along, along a sidewalk, or safely across the beach access if they're at the shopping center. Then there's a number of kinda minor plan corrections that are listed. Uh, the planning board heard this case, uh, and they also recommended unanimous approval with staff recommendations. And I can answer any questions you have.
Any questions for Mr. Woody? Hearing none, I'm gonna open the public hearing. I have two people signed up to speak, Mr. Tom Nash, who is representing the applicant, and Mr. Michael Strater, who is also representing the applicant. Y'all have anything to add?
Um, in the interest of time, no, sir.
Anyone have any questions of, uh, Mr. Nash? Thank you, Mr. Nash.
Thank you.
Mr. Strater, do you have anything to add?
No, sir, not unless you need me for a text.
Anyone have a question of Mr. Strater? Hearing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing and ask the board for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve PB 90-07 with staff findings and recommendations included in the case analysis. Should we read these findings? Should they be included, or just based on, uh, staff findings?
I think, I think you should, you should read based on, based on these, the findings set forth in the record that you conclude, and then, and read.
Read each individual one? Okay, uh, these findings will be included, uh, in my motion. Uh, the use will not endanger the public health or safety. Uh, the use will not injure the value of adjoining or abutting lands and will be in harmony with the area in which it is located. The use will be in conformity with land use planned or other officially adopted plan. The use will not exceed the county's ability to provide adequate public facilities, including, but not limited to, schools, fire, and rescue, law enforcement, and other county facilities. That's my motion for approval.
Second that motion.
Motion from Commissioner Petrie, a second from Commissioner Gilbert. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next items, consideration and action PB 1405 The Gables, request a preliminary plat use permit for 66 residential lots located on the north side of Guinea Road, approximately three-quarters of a mile from the intersection of Carrottoke Highway and Guinea Road, Tax Map 22, Parcel 64A, 64E, and 71B, Moyoc Township. Anyone that wishes to speak in favor of or in opposition to this permit needs to come forward now and be sworn. Body raise your right, okay. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
Thank you. You are sworn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a preliminary plat use permit, uh, for a 66-lot residential subdivision in the Moyoc Township. The property, as you can see on the aerial photograph, is just, uh, off of Guinea Road, uh, near the intersection of Guinea Road and Carrottoke Highway. Um, I'll note, you probably, or most of the commissioners, I think, recognize this. This was a rezoning that came before you previously in 2013. It was approved as a conditional zoning on July 1st, 2013, with a number of conditions, um, regarding that the maximum number of lots be 66, a 50-foot buffer, uh, be provided adjacent to farmland, and additional screening be provided, uh, when the subdivision adjoins existing residential properties, and then that the, uh, connectivity to adjoining parcels be required. Um, again, as you can see there, there's the zoning layout. You have, um, this particular parcel is Conditional District, Single Family. You can see there are several parcels that adjoin this that are already zoned, Single Family Mainland, uh, so fairly consistent with, with the zoning pattern that exists in that area. Land Use Plan classifies this area as, uh, full service. The Moyocs, the Moyo, excuse me, the Moyocs Mallaria Plan actually classifies this area as limited service, but this particular subdivision is consistent with either plan and either classification, um, so no conflict with that. Size of the site is 97.79 acres, so it's almost 100 acres, and you're looking at 66, uh, total units. So you've got a density of about .67 units per acre overall, so I, I would say a fairly, uh, all in all, a fairly low-density subdivision. And that's primarily because of the lot size. Uh, these lots are 40,000-square-foot lots. This is a, a, kind of a typical, uh, conventional subdivision. Um, has 29 acres of open space that are provided. Um, I'll note that the open space is, if you look at it, it's actually, kinda meanders throughout the development, so I would say that, that most likely, almost every lot, or if not every lot, touches some form of open space. Uh, rather than put sidewalks on, on both sides of the street, they've taken an opportunity to put, uh, trails through the open space. You'll have some sidewalk infrastructure on streets, and at times, it'll be a trail system, an ADA accessible trail system that goes through the open space. Uh, you can also see there's a number of stormwater ponds. They've proposed to distribute the stormwater to different ponds, rather than have just one large one. There is a wetland crossing, but that, that's been permitted, and the wetlands are being set, set aside in open space. Under the ordinance, you're required, or developers are required, to dedicate land to the county or pay a payment in lieu. In this particular case, when you, when you use the formula, the dedication is 1.68 acres, um, of land. However, the Technical Review Committee is requesting a payment in lieu of the dedication, so the recreation payment amount would be $10,478. And again, that's money that, when the final plat is recorded, the county could then use to program recreational opportunities, uh, in the Moyoc Township. This is a use permit, which is required to be issued as part of the subdivision plat. There are findings that are in your staff report. I'm not gonna read each of those. Um, I'll note that the, uh, suggested findings are included. Uh, real quickly, staff found no issues with, with the findings. Don't feel like the subdivision endangers the public health or safety. Uh, they've been able to get, uh, um, initial site evaluations from Albemarle Health to make sure that the on-site septic won't be an issue. In terms of compatibility, these are, uh, one-acre lots. Basically, they're, they're in an area of the county that's designated in our plans for, for future subdivision growth, so staff doesn't see any issues with compatibility. Uh, quite particularly, you've got Currituck Reserve that was approved, uh, to the north and west of this, and you've got a couple other subdivisions that actually directly connect to this. So there are some subdivisions, either built, being built, or planned in the immediate area. Um, land use plan's consistent, and again, uh, no issues with adequate public facilities. One thing that comes up a lot in the Moyoc area is school capacity. Um, this, uh, particular subdivision generates 16 elementary students, five middle school students, and nine high school students, and that's based on a formula that we plug into the lots. Uh, currently, this does not exceed the, the county's, uh, school capacity, so that's not an issue either. Uh, the TRC does recommend approval of this request with a couple of conditions, that the, uh, pedestrian circulation system be ADA accessible and hard-surfaced, um, that the 30-foot access easement be labeled, which is a minor plan correction, and that the county accept the payment in lieu of recreation. Planning board heard this case, and they also recommended unanimous approval with staff conditions. And I can answer any questions you have.
Questions for Mr. Woody? Hearing none, I'll open the public hearing. We have Mark Bissell has signed up, representing the applicant. We have Ms. Sue.
Helvestine.
Helvestine, and I believe Ms. Clements as well, so, Mark, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I'm gonna try to be brief, uh, because of the hour, and also because Mr. Woody did a pretty thorough job of, of outlining the case. Uh, the main things I will add is that we have had two community meetings. Uh, the first one was last year in connection with the conditional rezoning, and we had actually quite a few residents, um, show up for that hearing, or that community meeting, and the concerns were primarily, um, regarding stormwater management and buffering. And in response to those concerns, we did provide assurance that we would, um, would really study the stormwater management system thoroughly, and that we would provide additional buffering, uh, as requested, and those, uh, improvements were actually made to the plan that was presented to this board in connection with the conditional zoning request, and so the plan that we, that you actually have before you tonight is, is almost identical to that plan that was presented in connection with the conditional zoning, with the buffers shown, with the stormwater management addressed. Uh, the stormwater will, that is leaving the site post-development will be substantially less than leaves the site now as agricultural land. Additional buffers have been provided in the form of, um, berms, tree buffers, um, opaque fencing and landscaping, uh, as, as, uh, indicated in the response to the community meeting. The, um, findings are factored before you. It is, uh, does appear to be consistent with a number of provisions of the, of the land use plan. As Mr. Woody indicated, there are some, uh, conditions of approval that we have complied with, um, some of which are just in providing additional trails and sidewalks, so we actually now have a system of about 1.4 miles of trails and sidewalks throughout the site. So it's gonna be a very attractive and pedestrian-friendly development, and, um, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Anyone have any questions of Mr. Bissell? Thank you.
My name is Sue Helvestine, and I live at 426 Guinea Road in Moyoc. And, um, there's a few concerns that my, my neighbors and I would like to present to the board here. Um, the first concern is, uh, my neighbor Anne Spruill back there has livestock. She has cows, she's has chickens, she's got peacocks. And she's also gonna be bordered, um, three sides with this housing development and one side with the one that's going on now. And what we were concerned about is, when the people move in from the city and these animals start making this noise, we don't really wanna see animal control at her house. So if there would be some way that we could have this documented and recorded, that, I don't know, I guess y'all grandfathered this thing in, because the first thing that usually the city people do is they start complaining about the crow, I mean, the, uh, roosters crowing, and the cows, but she's had these for a long, long time. So we're kinda hoping that there's something y'all could do to document this and have it recorded.
Mr. Woody, what kind of buffers are between her property? Are you aware of her property?
I'm, I'm not aware of her property, but I-
She's gonna get buffering. She, she is, um, but you know, I live, I live, um, a little ways from her, and I can hear her cows. And there are houses between us. I mean, on a good day, you could hear the cow, you could hear the horses on the other side of the street. I mean, on a good day.
Did you say she had peacocks?
He says peacocks, and they scream.
Oh, they are real loud.
They are, you know, and, and she's got the chickens, and the geese, and the peacocks, and, and we know what's gonna happen, is when people move in from the city, they're just gonna hear these things, but this is the way of life down here. And we really don't want those phone calls, or those people showing up in her driveway, um, creating some sort of issue here.
Well, that does sound like music to us country folks.
It does. It really does. I mean, I could hear her peacocks at my house, so that's-
The pe, the peacocks, I might have not-
They sound like screaming cats.
Yeah.
Yeah, but the cows, you know, the cows, I don't hear the chickens, but you know, they, they do make noise. I mean, that's what they do, when they're happy.
How would that be addressed, Mr. McCree? They were there first.
Well, I, I pulled the noise ordinance out, first of all, to take a look. I, I don't know that there's any particular protection that's given to folks with livestock, frankly.
Agriculture. That's Anne.
Well, recognize it might be agricultural. We do have exemption in this noise ordinance for agricultural equipment. I guess there's a question whether any of these animals would reach a decibel level, such that it would be in violation of the noise ordinance?
I can't hardly imagine a cow-
I, I mean, I couldn't imagine it'd be that high of a decibel level that, that would be a violation.
It's a decibel level.
Peacocks are loud, yes.
It's in the 70s.
Well, we had, uh, we had a flock of some 75 peacocks that were wild on Bell's Island, and, uh, you know, uh-
How they taste?
They, uh, peahens?
Yeah.
Just like chickens. But they, uh, we had, uh, no problem with them.
But did you have people move in from the city?
I know some people from the city, when, uh, they come out, they, uh, they wanted to, uh, kill them and, uh, eradicate and things like that, but, uh, you know, uh, I think probably, uh, it would behoove the developer to, uh, probably maybe add it to the deed that, "Hey, you have a lady here who has farm animals, and just be aware that that's what you can expect if you move to the country."
That, just anything, because, you know, we don't want animal control coming to Anne's house, you know, when these things start screaming like they do, but, you know, I don't know anything else to say. I guess I just need to have it, you know, said and documented here in the meetings.
Mr. Woody, that question has had to come up before-
Mr. Woody, that question has had to come up before.
You can't put it in the deed.
I know, but how do you do it?
We had it with the seafood business on Pointer's Road last year.
Yeah, I think what we've done in the past is maybe put a note on the plat that, you know, we have a note on the plat for farming activity, for dust noise. I think there's a note for crab shedding, maybe, that goes on plats. So, the board can require some sort of note on the plat. Now, probably more appropriately is, planning staff should probably go out there, take a look at it, and write some sort of letter to the owner indicating, because we do a lot of livestock and agriculture zoning, giving them some sort of protection, at least acknowledging that they have livestock. So, that's the only two things I can think of.
And you'd be willing to do that?
Be willing, yes, absolutely.
So, what is he going to do?
He's going to write a letter acknowledging that there's livestock on that property.
And it's going to go to the homeowner?
I'll give it to the owner of the property.
Anne?
Yes.
Okay, okay. And that'll stop the police and all from coming down there?
I don't know if it'll stop them, but at least you can say it's permitted.
Okay, well, that's a start.
If they get a call, they're going to respond, but then if she's got a letter saying it's acknowledged by the county, then it's acknowledged by the county.
Okay, and then after a couple times, they come out there, they'll tell their buddies, and they won't have to show up again. My second concern was there's going to be quite a few ponds out there, BMPs. The last time I brought this up at the planning board, they were not mentioned about any fountains. I would strongly suggest that they come up with some ways to keep that water moving. If they don't keep that water moving, it's going to become a mosquito trap. And since Currituck County does not have any kind of mosquito control, it's going to be unbelievable out there. That's why fountains are put into the ponds, is to keep the water circulating. So, I kind of just wanted to throw that out there, too.
I don't know if our unified development ordinance addresses that to where you could require that. Does it, Mr. Woody?
It doesn't. And remember, generally, on the ponds, the water eventually wants to go to an outlet, so in some fashion, and if I'm wrong, the county engineer can correct me, but I think the water has an outlet, so it should be moving, correct?
It'll move when it gets to like a septic tank, and then it'll have overflow.
Yes, okay.
Yeah, so you will have a wet pond, yes. So, I don't guess there's anything we can do?
That's another part of the country. You're going to have mosquitoes.
But they're adding to the population of the mosquitoes. Okay. I guess my next thing concern is, and these paperwork's that we're getting, Anne and I go to all the meetings, and we're getting paperwork from the county planning board and the board of commissioners. And in one of these paperwork's here, it said that trees are to be planted in the housing development along the streets and the buffers. We would like to see these trees planted once that road is built, not when this is finally developed in three to five years.
Isn't that part of-
Yeah, the trees are typically planted when the infrastructure is built.
And that would be the road?
Yeah, the road, and that's before the lots are plotted. Now, I'll note, just so everybody hears, that if they're plating the lot in July, then we will allow a performance guarantee and let them plant the trees in the fall, because you want the trees planted when they're going to live. But they have to be done-
Right.
-as the subdivision is plotted.
It is, okay.
It is, yes.
Because I think they're going to do, what, two or three phases? So, yeah.
They would plant with each phase that goes through.
Okay, so that would be okay. So, we just don't want them to wait till the very end to do this, especially the buffers. Because, you know, Anne, she's going to get slammed right off the bat. Okay, well, that's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Did you have anything to add, Ms. Clements?
It's going to be a graded audit. It'd be really lovely.
Are you committed?
Okay, with that, I'll close the public hearing and ask the board for a decision.
Well, I guess, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve PB 105 with staff findings and recommendations that have been included in the case analysis and to include Mr. Woody's letter going to the concerned citizens that already live there. The suggested findings included in that case analysis would be: this use will not endanger the public health or safety; the use will not injure the value of adjoining land; the use will be in conformity with the land use plan; and it will not exceed the county's ability to provide adequate public facilities.
That's a rule, it's already-
We have a motion from Commissioner Martin. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a second from Commissioner Gilbert. Any further conversation? Hearing none. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is C, consideration in action, PB 1409, Currituck County Utility Use Landscaping. Request to amend the Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter 5, Development Standards to create an alternative landscape plan for utility uses.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And this amendment does relate to your next use permit item, but not exclusively. So, what we have is, in this particular case, is there was utility, which is a solar array, and when you apply the landscaping standards, there was a requirement that a considerable number of shade trees be planted in and among the solar panels, which doesn't make a lot of sense, because if you're shading solar panels, they don't work. So, obviously, that was an issue. But now, that's an obvious issue, but I also will note that there's been instances in the past where you've had the phone company that's wanted to put in transformer boxes, there's been sewer lift stations or pump stations, sewer lines, water lines. There's a lot of utilities that are required that it really doesn't make sense to then go on top of the utility and plant trees or shrubs or anything else like that. Really, the more common sense way is when there is a utility that's needed to allow that landscaping to then either be relocated or moved to another part of the site where it doesn't conflict with the utility. So, really, what this text amendment does, it applies to the solar array, but in general, it says that in the instance where you have a, and it's a true utility, and there's a landscaping issue or some sort of incompatibility, the utility provider or the property owner can submit an alternative landscape plan. And we do allow alternative landscape plans for other items, too. So, that's not necessarily a new option, it's just adding to the list of alternative landscape plans. So, what this would do is say that basically reduction or the relocation of required landscaping could be included in this alternative landscape plan that's reviewed, and if it's a use permit would be reviewed by the board of commissioners, or if it's a staff approval, it would be reviewed by the TRC. So, it does allow flexibility in placement of the required landscaping, but we also kept the standard in there that regardless, right-ofways or adjoining developed land still requires some type of buffering. So, in the example you're going to see next, specifically, it means that while this utility can move or relocate trees that are interior to the site, they still have to maintain a buffer along the highway, in this case, 34, or adjoining residential developments. So, ultimately, the utility is still screened from the road neighbors, but it gives the utility more flexibility with landscaping in and around the utility itself. And staff does recommend approval of this text amendment. And I can answer any questions you have.
All right. Does anyone have any questions? Is this on for a public hearing or just action?
It's a public hearing.
Okay.
It should have been, yeah, it should have been public hearing and action, it's listed wrong, but-
Okay, I'll open the public hearing. I have no one signed up for the public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak to this that did not sign up? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing and ask the board for a motion.
Motion to approve PB 1409 based on the staff finding, including staff finding.
We have a motion from Commissioner Petrie.
A second.
Second from Commissioner Griggs. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next item, D, consideration in action, PB 1407, Ecoplexus Inc., request for a use permit for a solar array, solar energy farm located in Shawboro, on Shawboro Road, directly across from Shawboro Elementary School, tax map 33, parcel 1C, Crawford Township.
Raise your right hand.
Put your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand.
Exactly what I told them.
Yep.
Not my first word yet.
You've already earned your money. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but truth, so help you God.
I do.
You are sworn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a use permit for a solar array or solar energy farm. This property is located off of Shawboro Road or NC 34. It's actually across the street from the Shawboro Elementary School and the convenience center. As you probably are aware, there are transmission lines that bisect this property, which is hence the location being attractive for this type of use. Currently, it's active farmland. The property is on agricultural. Land use plan designates it as rural. And essentially, if you know the location, it's basically, other than the school and the convenience center and a scattered, a few scattered houses, it's mostly agricultural land that's around this property. Size of the site is 225 acres, and again, it is proposed for a solar energy farm that will consist of approximately 86,400 solar panels. The 300-watt panels arranged in rows that are fixed to a metal racking system, and of course, they're attached to the ground with posts or ground screws. And just to give some context, since the sun tracks in the southern sky, these panels basically face southward. So, they do not, they face away from the elementary school, to give you some context of the way they'll be arranged. The applicant did hold a community meeting on October of 2013. Approximately 20 residents attended that meeting. A lot of questions were asked. I attended the meeting as well. There's a summary of that community meeting included in your agenda packet. I'll let the applicant explain this in more detail, but essentially, solar panels produce renewable energy. They have an agreement with Dominion Power, who will purchase the renewable energy. North Carolina is considered to be a state that is friendly to renewable energy. There's probably a number of factors that lead to that, one being some legislation adopted by the General Assembly several years ago contributes to that. Additionally, there's some relief on property tax as well, but I'll let the applicant explain those reasons in more detail. But I do want to take a second to note that while this solar array will be obviously taxed by the county, it's personal property, but the general statutes require or state that the county can tax solar energy electrical systems at 20% of the value. So, effectively, the tax rate is 20% of what that equipment's valued at. Now, of course, the land itself is in its present use value now, because it's farmed, and that will come out of that and be taxed at market rate. But essentially, in terms of tax revenue, you're probably looking at around $38,000 a year in revenue, give or take. And again, if there's any additional questions on the panels, I can try to answer those, or the applicants are probably more qualified to do that. This is a use permit, so there are findings that the board has to make. We've provided suggested findings in your staff reports. Staff does not see any issues with the use permit findings. It doesn't appear to endanger the public health or safety in any way. It has no additional burden on county services or infrastructure. It's an unmanned site, and there are no buildings associated with the use. In terms of compatibility, everything around it primarily is on agricultural. It's in cultivation, so in the landscape amendment this board just passed, the fact that it requires screening from 34 and from adjacent residential structures, I think, will relieve any compatibility issues that may exist, in the opinion of staff. Land use plan, we think it's consistent with the land use plan. It's just an alternative way for agricultural landowners to receive some income on their land. It keeps the land out of development, provides some additional revenue for the county. So, in terms of that, no issues with the land use plan. Adequate public facilities. Solar arrays don't really generate any need for county services or facilities, so staff doesn't see any concerns with that. The TRC has reviewed this request and did recommend approval. The approval recommendation includes 17 conditions. I'm not going to read all of those. They're in your staff report. A lot of those deal with construction, making sure wetlands aren't impacted, making sure the panels meet any kind of flood standards that will apply, making sure landscaping is installed in accordance with the amendment we just passed, making sure the solar panels can meet wind loads. There's signage that keeps, of course, they fence it to keep people out anyways, but signage is posted to keep people out of the compound. Ground cover, grass is required, so you don't have any kind of erosion issue. So, most of the conditions of approval are related to really technical issues, but they're in the staff report, and I can answer any questions you have. Planning Board also heard this request, and they recommended approval as well with the 17 staff recommendations. And additionally, I should note this, there are six other, the 17 conditions that staff recommended are technical issues primarily. There are six other additional conditions that staff is recommending that be incorporated into the use permit, and those are related to a glare analysis or documentation approved by the FAA to make sure these panels don't have any impact on an airport or planes that are coming to or from the airport in terms of glare. The applicant assures me that they don't want to have glare from solar panels, that's counterproductive, but nonetheless, we will look for documentation. That's not an issue. Have a height limit of 15 feet, that the solar array system be screened from the right-ofway and adjacent residential uses. Any electrical wiring used in the system be underground, except for wiring is brought for interconnection. And then finally, that prior to issuance of building permit, a plan for decommissioning be provided to the county, and that is, that would be their plan of how, if this thing runs its course, how they're going to remove the components and what their plan is to move that stuff off the property. So, planning board recommended approval with the 17 technical conditions and the six additional recommended conditions. And that concludes my presentation. I can answer any questions you have.
Questions for Mr. Woody?
Just a couple. And I reviewed this somewhat, but I'm just going to ask these questions just more to get it out there, get it in the public. First one will be relative to electromagnetic emanations, and we discussed that, but if you could just, for the record, enlighten us.
There, and Commissioner Griggs asked about electromagnetic radiation or emanation or any kind of fields that may come from this project. And what staff relied on is the UNC School of Government published a report on permitting, how local governments permit solar arrays and things to be aware of. And that report actually did address electromagnetic output from these facilities, and the report cited several studies that say there is no output to be concerned. There's nothing above normal from a solar array facility. So, in terms of any kind of electromagnetic rays or anything emanating from this property, if you're outside of the property, there's no concern with that. And again, we relied on a study referenced by the School of Government.
And another question, Anne. My research, I didn't, I couldn't find anything that indicated it, but I'll ask anyway, just for the record, residual effects on the ground underneath post-operation?
I'm not aware of anything. My understanding is that once the racketing system is removed, it can just go right back into agricultural production.
I believe the technology involved in this, although I'm no expert, it doesn't, the technology that is proposed here doesn't generate any heat or any heat significant that would emanate from the site.
That is my understanding, yes.
And my last comment on this, if the board would want to consider a performance guarantee relative to any potential cleanup or decommission, and I talked with Mr. Woody about this earlier, I think there's some counties around here that do have that. There's some issues with the timeframe that's involved in it, and I would ask Mr. Woody to speak to that issue and his recommendations.
We, and decommissioning is how you get the stuff off the property if the solar panels run their course or if the company walks away, for example. And we looked at that in the publication from the School of Government. Most local governments, they just require a decommissioning plan but don't require a performance guarantee. The thought process in that is, there's enough recyclable, salvageable material out of the solar array that, for the most part, it's easy to get rid of, because you have the metal you can recycle, you have copper wire that's valuable. So, for the most part, most jurisdictions look at this as something that with a plan, they can rely on these panels to be removed. Now, I will note that there are a few jurisdictions that require a performance guarantee, which is a posting of a bond or cash, so the county can ensure this material is removed. And Pasputank County is one example locally of a jurisdiction that does require a performance
What would be your recommendation relative to this project and your considerations on that?
I think, given the recyclable value of the materials, I think that the, having a copy of the decommissioning plan that the county, TRC, can approve would be appropriate. a copy of the decommissioning plan that the county TRC can approve would be appropriate in this case.
Thank you.
All right, next.
We addressed glare and as far as aircraft, I'm assuming, but I want to ask, glare on, from, to vehicles is not an issue if it's, I think, facing south, so it's going back towards Shawboro.
Yeah, in this case, the panels aren't really facing 34, so it should not be an issue. In the research staff, we did not find glare as something that typically comes up with these panels. Glare towards roadways or anything, that's not to say it doesn't exist, we just didn't see it as an issue in our research.
Mr. Woody, what the technology involved in this, this particular array, and I'm no expert on this by any means, but what reading I did indicated that the process they're utilizing here mitigates glare, because there, in this process, there's the attempt to capture all the solar energy that's possible. So glare, this particular, at least what I read on this, is not as significant as maybe some other.
Yeah.
Technology.
Yeah, and the commercial application, and they can answer this better than I can, but I understand that having glare from the panels is really, they don't want that. That's contrary to what they're trying to accomplish, so.
All right, anyone else? Hearing none, I'll open the public hearing. I guess, Mr. Morrison, you'll be first.
Yes, thank you. I'm John Morrison, attorney with Twyford Law Firm, office here in Moayok in Currituck. I'm going to try, given the lateness of the hour, to give you the Cliff Notes version of this, reminding you this is a legal, not a political proceeding for a special use permit. And Mr. Woody, I think it's your opinion, they have complied with the requirements of UDO, is that correct?
It is, that's correct.
Okay. My clients are here, including the president of the company and project managers. I would hope you would not ask them any questions. They are from San Francisco, and they are in severe culture shock right now. I was just taking notes as we went along. In the course of this evening, we've discussed animal shelters. One speaker who self-described himself with considerable pride as a redneck. We then went to bullies. Then we talked about outdoor shooting ranges. And this one is a new one for me. We went into dumpster diving, coyote infestations, but not to worry, because we've got 118 licensed trappers in the county of 24,000 people. We didn't have time to get to the bears. We did touch pundim malaria plan, calves, chickens, and peacocks. And there's an issue with crab shedding, but we'll get to that later. I can't wait till they tell Ms. Pelosi about their trip to Currituck. And one last thing, I know you all think you hired the Twyford Law Firm, but my children and grandchildren refer to me as Bubba, and my secretary is Elvis, and you being represented from San Francisco, California by Bubba and Elvis from Moayok. Now that we have established a sophisticated climate, I will give you my analysis, understanding I'm an English major, not an engineer. By the way, we do have some people in Currituck County that have all their teeth and bathe when needed, and there's a rumor there's a guy on the south end of the county can do long division. This plan.
Over the line now.
Yeah. Well, I live in Camden, and all of a sudden, I've decided that Camden is the Athens of the dismal swamp compared to Currituck. The owner of this property is Mr. Guy Newman from Virginia Beach. It is, as you heard, in Shawboro. It's 225 acres. What I'd like to point out to you, because we always have to, you know, my years here, the argument that was politically indefensible was, but it's for the children. And so, let me tell you how this is for the children. Right now, this land is paying taxes because it's in agricultural use of $900 a year. When it goes out of the agricultural use, this land will pay in taxes on the land only, $3,384. That, of course, will go up, I guess, over the 30-year life expectancy of this project. There will be personal property tax of, it's going to be 86,000 of these panels. And the, the purchase price of these is approximately $1.35 per watt, and this farm will produce 26 million watts, so you can, you can do the math. I don't mean to indicate that it's a huge amount, because of course, the General Assembly, to encourage this kind of development, says you can only tax it at 20%. But there is some significant money over 30 years, over and above what you're getting. Further, this project, as Mr. Woody pointed out to you, will not put children in the school system. It will help pay for children that are already there. Now, as to some details of this, it's a, perhaps a $30 million construction project. There will be some temporary local construction jobs. The tax base will increase. There are no infrastructure requirements. Best I can see, the only infrastructure we're going to have is a fence and a gravel path to service these panels for a pickup truck. Safety is obviously a concern when you have something new like this. I can understand, Commissioner, you were well advised to ask those questions. I have inquired about this, this is my understanding. The panels will not have a glare. They are opaque. As Mr. Woody pointed out, if the panels glare, they're losing heat. They're reflecting heat, and they're designed with great sophistication not to do that. Not only will they not glare, they have less glare than the window panes in your house. Okay? So that should not be an issue. Additionally, I said, well, what, what, God forbid, somebody invaded the premises and put their hand on one of these panels. There's no heat. They told me it's like your refrigerator. You know, your refrigerator's got all kinds of electricity running through it, but you can put your hand on it, and there's no ill effects. There are, these panels are on hospitals, on schools, nursery schools, retirement homes, individual residences, apartment houses. This technology's been around long enough to be determined safe. There's not going to be any stormwater runoff, because the panels are not going to be impervious. The water is just going, the grind is going to be uncovered under the panels, so it'll follow the same pattern it does now with nature. There's no noise. I know all of us here have been concerned in the oilfight battle, and perhaps one alternative to the Navy coming in was to put wind turbines in the Hells Lake area. One downside we find after we looked in that is wompa, 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 and the great height of the turbines. These are silent. Additionally, the tallest structure they anticipate building, other than the fence, is eight feet. And from two to eight feet is going to be the height of these panels. There will be buffers, there are certain additional permits that are in the technical review findings that they will have to get, and they will do so. There is going to be signage, they've agreed to that, that will give an emergency number, although we don't know what the emergency would be. They have wind resistance of up to 150 miles an hour. I think the county is requiring 125 for the hurricanes, but they will withstand 150. The removal plan, I think, would anticipate that they can be removed in 30 to 60 days if they go 12 months without generating any electricity. Commissioner, you did have a good point that is often the case with towers, about what about the removal cost. I think Mr. Woody addressed that. My clients advise me that the financing for these things is fragile. They don't begin to make a profit until the second 15 years. There are tremendous startup costs, and it would be a deal killer to have to renew a bond for 30 years. So we would hope you would accept the fact that what would be left, if it was not removed by the company, would have a very substantial financial binding value, and that is, in fact, what most counties elect to do. It does have one added advantage. This is a sort of conservation easement. I know Currituck, like most of our counties in this part of the state, that are now rapidly developing with residential construction. This project will go for 30 years. So for 30 years, you don't have to worry about a subdivision appearing in these 224 acres or somebody coming and asking you for it. It's had the approval unanimously of the planning board, the staff. If you read the notes of the community meeting, there was no objection, there were just interesting questions wanting to discuss. It almost seems like science fiction. So what it comes down to is this, Currituck has got an opportunity to get into the green energy field and do it fairly promptly. It's got an opportunity to increase its tax base, and with minimal development and no imposition on your public sector services, schools, law enforcement, et cetera. It has met the requirements of the UDO, and I would respectfully request that it be passed. I'll be pleased to answer any other questions. And in the unlikely event, I do not have enough knowledge to respond, I will call upon these poor folks from San Francisco.
Only question I have is, is, Mr. Chairman, when are you planning on starting?
When are you planning on starting?
Sure. I would say that's dependent on.
Step up and address it.
Sure. I'm Eric Stewie, I'm the president of EcoPlexus. Thanks very much for having us here. We're actually not in shock, a lot of us are from smaller towns, so.
Brave face.
The start date is currently scheduled for spring of 2015. However, that's dependent on finalizing some issues with Dominion, the utility at this point, but that's the target date.
Thank you, Mr. President.
You said the fencing of the property, I know it's 200 and some acres, is that going, the entire complex will be fenced?
Yes, sir, and it will be buffered, of course, as well. And in that regard, my clients accept all of the staff's recommended findings and all the recommendations of the technical review, and we waive their reading, or we'd be here another hour or so. But they've carefully studied them, and they can comply with them all and are pleased to accept them.
Mr. Morrison, I attended the public hearing that you.
Yes, ma'am, I saw.
Back in October. And one of the biggest concerns was, because this facility was unmanned, that the maintenance and the upkeep would still adhere to our county guidelines as far as the grass and the maintenance of the property, so it wasn't overgrown. And that, that seemed to be one of the biggest concerns between that and the endangering of the agricultural area around it and the wildlife. And you all did a great job of giving that information out and the facts that it would not. So I kind of want you to speak a little bit on that, if you would.
Yes, ma'am. In the presentation, as part of your packet, although the site will be unmanned, because there's not anything to do most of the time, except watch the sun hit the panels, they will have routine maintenance. I mean, it won't be abandoned, they don't put it up and walk away. The grass will be routinely mowed. They will have inspections that will also occur at regular intervals. The site will be posted with a sign in the event something goes wrong or is a concern to anybody as to who to call that would be available 24 hours a day. Does that answer your question, Commissioner Gilbert? Thank you.
To my knowledge, I've done my homework on this stuff too, like Commissioner Griggs, most of the, when they put the panels so far, I mean, that's going to be on, is it crush-and-run, some material, something like that, like you stated earlier?
I do not know, that's high rare.
Good evening, my name's Halsey Kendrick. I grew up in northern Vermont in a town of 5,000 people, so this is very familiar. So to address your question, the panel racking system is, is basically a post system that's either a ground screw or a driven post. You leave the land. We don't want to disturb the land any more than possible, because there's no need to.
Okay. So there's 86,000?
86,000 panels mounted on a racking system, so you won't have 86,000 posts. You may have 15,000 posts.
And that's the picture, I don't know if he can see that, that's, I mean, that's similar. They said five to eight, five to eight foot.
Right, right, so that's, there we go. So you can see, that would be the, that's a, that's a single-axis tractor system. We may do something like that, or we may do a fixed tilt. A similar, similar concept.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
I would just have, I would just have a, just a comment. With that marvelous invention known as Google, I went on there this morning and looked, and though you emanate, or you originate from San Francisco, I understand or see that your company has an international footprint. And from everything I read, companies be commended, there's, I see a lot of good reviews and so forth on there, so welcome to Currituck.
Thank you, Commissioner Griggs. In that regard, they have approximately 40 projects underway in North Carolina and about 400 that are up and running across the country that you've done.
Forty, I've been running.
Forty, excuse me, just a mild lawyer exaggeration. Forty, not 400, excuse me. They have done this before. They do, in fact, have an excellent tractor.
Anyone else? Hearing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and ask the board for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I've moved to approve PB 1407 with the staff findings and recommendation, including the case analysis. Adding the staff findings, the use will not endanger the public or health or safety, the use will not injure the value of adjoining or abiding lands, and will be harmony with the area in which it's located. The use will be in conformity with the land use plan or other officially adopted plan. The use will not exceed the county's ability to provide adequate public facilities, including but not limited to schools, fire, rescue, law enforcement, and other county facilities.
I second that motion. A motion from Commissioner Gilbert, a second from Commissioner McCord. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item is old business, consideration of motion to repeal direction of Board of Commissioners remanding PB 1403 Currituck County Outdoor Shooting Ranges to the Planning Board. Woody?
I think this.
I don't know who it's to.
Mr. Scanlon, one of you three.
This matters on your agenda, at the request of the board, in order to reconsider a motion made at your May 19th meeting with regard to the outdoor shooting rain text amendment, that the matter be remanded back to the Planning Board and/or staff for clarification of points raised by Commissioner Griggs during the course of that public hearing. It would be appropriate, then, for their, to counteract that motion, to entertain a motion of this board to repeal the motion of May 19th, 2014, to remand the matter back to the Planning Board and/or staff for clarification of points raised by Commissioner Griggs.
So that requires a motion, a second, and a vote.
That's correct.
Well, since it was my motion to send it back to the Planning Board, I believe, well, I'll make a motion that we repeal the direction to go to the Planning Board and remand it back to staff for action.
A motion from Commissioner Griggs, a second from Commissioner Martin. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Now we're starting on new business. Item A, presentation of fiscal year 1415 budget and set date for public hearing. Mr. Scanlon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. By statute, I am required to prepare and assemble a balanced budget and present it to the Board of Commissioners, which we are doing tonight. At the end of my presentation, it's a formal passing of the budget from the manager to the Board of Commissioners. You'll be required to set a public hearing, which we are recommending you do at your next meeting on June 16th, at which time you. next meeting on June 16, at which time you may or may not consider adopting the budget as long as you haven't adopted before July 1. So with that in mind, if you will indulge me, we will go through the budget that I'm looking to present to you tonight. By statute, you're required to prepare a balanced budget, federal government is not. It is one of your most major decision policies that the board does, is how you spend and how you allocate money speaks to your vision for the county for the upcoming year. We think, we generally try to think of the budget as a single document. We actually have 26-plus budgets that we compiled together that make the county budget. Want to start off, because last year when we were having this conversation, we were introducing some new phrasing to the board under revow and revenue neutral. Last year during this period of time, we were doing revow, and we lost about a third of the value of the county was lost. I just want to show this to you, you're seeing, this is about a 15-year period of time, you see the revow in 2005 where the county almost quadrupled in valuation, and then you see the decline of last year. Want to just kind of note the shape of this, that graph? I want to show you that the property tax rate over that same period of time, which you'll see is the exact opposite of the valuation. If you recall, valuation times the rate is the amount of tax collected. You can see that for about eight years, we enjoyed a very stable tax rate. Under the revow, we had to go to a revenue-neutral rate. Now, that doesn't mean that individual property owners didn't see tax increases, it means the county as a whole did not see a tax increase. The folks that live certainly from here north to the state line did see a tax increase. But I want to show you in this graph here, this is the amount of taxes that we've collected over the same period of time. You can see there's a slight increase associated with the natural valuation improvement in the budget, or, excuse me, in the tax base. But you can see for quite some time, we have been very static with the amount of property tax. So this is probably a good pictorial indication of revenue-neutral. So although the rate was increased, the amount of revenue generated from that increase was nominal. This is the valuation of the county by region, you'll see the change from last year to this year. Corolla has started to see some building going on before the mainland, so you're seeing a slight uptick in Corolla. It's about a 2% increase in the valuation in Corolla compared to the rest of the county. About 58% of the valuation is on the Outer Banks, the remaining 42% is on the mainland. That's a graphic representation of the same information. I want to talk about the general fund, this is what most people think of when they think about the county budget. This is where we do our day-to-day operation and what most people think of when they think of county budget. Just as an overview, the budget we are presenting is proposing a half-cent decrease in the county property tax. It is a 2.15% decrease over the budget that we currently have. I am proposing a 2% cost of living adjustment for the county employees, it's been a couple years since we've had the pleasure of being able to do that. Even though it's a decrease overall in the budget, we did have to absorb about a $243,000 increase in our group medical coverage. I am not proposing any new personnel in this budget, although we are proposing a 2.6 increase in school funding. Graphically, this is showing over a period of time, the general fund budget, as you can see, has been commented several times by board. You can see that we peaked out in the year about 2006, 2007. Since then, we've been steady decline. In fact, the budget I'm presenting now is less than it was 10 years ago. This is how we fund the general fund operation, 55% of it coming from property tax, 11% coming from other taxes, that's predominantly sales tax. So two-thirds of the county funding comes from property tax and sales tax. There's a listing of your top five revenue sources. Those revenues there generate about 80% of the operational revenue for the county. And that's property tax, sales tax. There's a breakdown of property tax further between real estate and motor vehicles. This is showing your tax rate, as you can see, we've been pretty steady with our tax rate for quite some time. Again, you also notice the half-cent decrease. This is going to put something in perspective, this is a showing of the top five, the lowest tax rates in the state, and the top five highest tax rates in the state. We used to be in the lowest rate, we went through revaluation, and we no longer are there. But you can also see the statewide tax rate is about 69, 65%. We're at 48, we're the 18th lowest tax rate in the state of North Carolina. This is our operations. You can see public safety and education, required services makes up about two-thirds of our budget. We are a service-oriented operation, our value is with our people, and as you can see, about 44% of the cost of government is in the cost of our people. This is the five, six largest things that we fund. No surprise, education by far is the biggest thing we fund, followed by public safety services, emergency medical services, sheriff's office, social services, the jail, and our volunteer fire departments. That is about 60, 65% of our total operation in just those departments there. These are the six largest increases in the budget, and you can see the largest thing that we are increasing is our contribution to education. Although we're not proposing to hire any additional people, this shows you the last five years how the staff is dispersed amongst our different departments. The red bar there represents public safety, and you can see by far the majority of our employees are hired in the public safety field. We have 370 full-time equivalent employees last year, and we'll have 370 full-time employees next year. As a percentage breakdown, again, you see that 52% of our folks are in the public safety Over the last five years, we've hired seven people, four of those being in public safety, and three in general government. As I mentioned, we're not looking to hire anybody in this budget. We've had a funding formula that we use for the Board of Education, it's been in place for about 12, 15 years now, and it's served us very well. It plays off of this schedule here. We index in inflation the amount per student. I believe we're using an inflation rate of 1.5%, so the 2003-64 last year, adjusted for inflation, is $2,390 per student. We have a projected student body rate next year of 3,850, when you do the math, it comes out to the 9.2. We add other funds to the general fund, start making, we're starting to build now the overall county budget, and as you can see here, we're still looking at a decrease in the operating budget. These are the add-ins we get from the general fund to the operating budget. You're adding in your special service districts, the watershed districts, the utility, the water departments, the sewer departments. We are suggesting some rate adjustments in some of our utilities. We are, over time, attempting to merge the Moayak Commons wastewater plant, the Newtown Road wastewater plant, and the new Moayak wastewater plant. We're looking to combine those. We have to get all those customers on the same rate base before we can do that. So over several years, we have been slowly doing that. Next year, we are proposing to increase on the Newtown sewer system. Their sewer bill right now, this year, is equal to the water bill. Next year, we're looking at their sewer bill being 1.25 times the water bill, slight increase. In Moayak Commons, they had a combination of a district tax, which we have been slowly decreasing. This, next year, we're talking about completely eliminating the district tax, it's 10 cents this year, zero next year. We're talking about decreasing their water rate, or, excuse me, their wastewater rate. This year, they pay three times their water rate is their wastewater bill, next year we're proposing to go two times. The goal here is to get both of these systems to, that the sewer bill is one and a half times the water bill, that will put everybody at the same rate, and we can merge those systems. We are proposing to increase the fee at our scales for solid waste. We are just a transfer station, most of, all of our solid waste gets hauled down to the landfill in Bertie County, they charge us a fee at Bertie County. In that contract that the regional solid waste has, it has an inflating factor based on the price of diesel, so the tipping fee that we're charged is constantly changing. If we do not increase it from the current $71 to $73, $73 per ton, we would actually fall behind. So we need to do this in order to maintain neutrality with the landfill in Bertie County. Several years ago, we actually implemented a second tier. We do have some waste from outside of the county that does come into the county, and we charge a higher rate for that to discourage that.
Is it still higher than the county they come out of?
It is.
Okay.
It is. This is the total budget for the county. As you can see, it is a decrease over the current year, in fact, it's a 7% decrease next year for the total county budget than the existing budget. And we get the total budget by adding in our capital project funds. Projects that we're working on, major projects that we're working on next year, continuing to do the design and the funding of the animal shelter, we should get that, that facility should be under construction next fiscal year. We are proposing to do the next phase of improvements at the rural center, which is providing some overnight accommodations, some electrical connections, some water connections so that we can get weekend-long events. And we are considering the next phase at the Currituck Community Park, which is the installation of a softball-baseball complex. That project has actually been funded over a couple of years. In the fall, we should see that project move towards construction. Tonight, I'm presenting the budget to you, we are recommending that you set the public hearing for June 16, and the board will need to adopt it either that night, or you need to call a special meeting so that you could have it adopted by July 1. And it's a quick overview, the budget is, the entire budget is, will be on the county website Wednesday. So any citizen who would like to go in and look department by department, line item by line item, will have access to the full budget. There are printed copies in my office, and I'll be happy to answer any questions the board might have.
You want to have any questions? I know we've spent two days going through this budget to get where we are tonight. So any questions? What we need to do is have a motion to set the date for the public hearing.
Yes, sir.
For June 16.
Yes, sir.
I make a motion that we set the meeting, public hearing, for June 16.
An adoption.
An adoption.
We have a motion from Commissioner Gilbert, a second from Commissioner Martin. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next is board appointments, and I believe Joan DeBello would like to stay on the senior advisory board. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item C is consent agenda.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion, a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, commissioners report, unless you really got something important.
I have nothing tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Petrie, Mr. Martin.
No, I do not have something.
We will move on to the manager's report.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we do have a graduation coming up for the high school.
Next Friday.
That'll be before our next meeting, so I would like to, you know, congratulate our graduates from the high school. I attended the JP Knapp graduation, excellent ceremony, and look forward to seeing our graduates on June 13.
Thank you.
We got three between us graduating.
County managers report.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Need a motion to recess from the county commissioners' meeting and reconvene as the tourism development authority to see the presentation for the tourism budget and set date for public hearing.
So moved.
Have a motion.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Scanlon.
Mr. Chairman, you sit as the tourism development authority, you do that by statute. Here's a reference to that statute that creates the tourism development authority and establishes the Board of Commissioners as that authority. Your charge under the TDA is the management of the oxy tax. The oxy tax is actually three separate taxes that the board has approved over various years. We have the original 3%, an additional 1% that was adopted, and finally, the board adopted an additional 2%. So the 6% is actually three separate. There are statutory restrictions on how that money can be spent. Here's those restrictions, the original 3% has to go to tourism-related expenditures. Both the additional 1% and 2%, two-thirds of it have to go to promoting travel and tourism, with the remaining one-third going to tourism-related. This is what that means mathematically. We're projecting a oxy tax collection of just a tick over $10 million for next year. You can see the statutory requirements, that 3.3 million of that has to go to promoting travel and tourism, and the balance of 6 million needs to go to travel-related expenditures. Promoting travel and tourism, here's a statutory definition, it is what you would think it is, it is the advertising and marketing of the county. This is how that budget breaks down. About 64%, almost two-thirds of the oxy tax that has to go to promoting actually goes into promoting. The remaining of that supports the tourism department that manages tourism for the county. That 64% is broken down in this fashion, with a vast majority of that money being spent on social media and internet advertising, and you can see the breakdown thereafter. Tourism-related expenditures, statutory definition, the Board of Commissioners have flexibility to use tourism-related expenditures for capital and project items that not only increase or encourage tourism, but also looks at meeting facilities, recreational facilities, convention facilities, and even has an item in there about beach nourishment. So you actually have more flexibility than most folks realize under this item. Here's the top expenditures and how we're proposing to use this. We hire additional ambulance units and EMS folks in the summer to address the influx of tourists. We fund that from this number, this money. We also hired additional deputies and have additional patrols in the Outer Banks, oxy tax funds those additional patrols. Here's the last contribution towards recreation for the baseball-softball complex. We fund a Whalehead Club, Whalehead Trust, $800,000 annually. Beach services, lifeguard services. Connecting Corolla is a plan that was presented to you back in the fall. What we're proposing here is to start working on the multi-use path, to start working on additional parking and additional amenities in Corolla to address the tourist population. And the last thing is, the, I mentioned this previously, the projects that we're looking to undertake, the rural center, to accommodate overnight stays, will actually be funded from oxy tax. You have the same requirement as you had for your general budget, I'm presenting it tonight, we're asking and suggesting that you set a public hearing for June 16 with adoption that night or thereafter, so that you have this budget to adopt it in place by July 1. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions on the manager? Hearing none, we need...
I'll make a motion that we hear the, or, set the public meeting for June 16, including adoption.
Have a motion?